Okay, good morning Commissioners. We are waiting on one of our Commissioners, but who will start it? And when he pops in, we're gonna get him caught up. Welcome, we're here at the special meeting of Brewster County Commissioners' Court. Today is Wednesday, January the 29th, 2020. Time now is 10:03 a.m. And we're here at the Repetitive Community Center in Scootie Hues, Texas. At this time, if you'd please staff the notification for the meetings. Dear Heavenly Father, the first thing I would want to give thanks to is for this beautiful day on the way driving in, it's just an amazing sight to see the landscape out here in South County. Always a joy coming this way, we ask that you guide us throughout the morning. And as everybody returns back to their homes, that you guide and look after everybody. We also ask that you keep in mind, that we all keep in mind, some of the tragedies that have happened over the weekend, families and loved ones, keep them in your prayers. Lord, so we pray, amen.
Amen. (Inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the Republic of Brewster County, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get started, I want to give you a couple of new faces, some visitors who've joined us. I'd like to go ahead and, first of all, I mean, I know most of you are the last, but let me just start with you on the right-hand side, with the ladies first.
(Inaudible) Commissioner of Betsy's. So, I'm the Commissioner for Precing, too.
Judge Carter?
Reuben Alteig, Commissioner for Precing.
And other officials, do you want?
(Inaudible). Erica Chavez and (Inaudible).
Yeah, she's my new assistant at the office, she's my new right-hand, which is good. Ladies, can we see other of the officials, just birds here? And I don't really know you, but you're not?
(Inaudible).
And of course, our Sheriff is back there. Right, go on. Introduce yourself. You guys are the best in the audience, we're out of town. Why don't they give you your name, in case whoever hates them all around the night, they could throw an email?
I'm your Sheriff, Pauline Johnson.
Okay, now, let's go ahead and, the ones that are here to present, or that are, if they travel, if you don't mind introducing them, we'll start right here. If you want to stand up so you can see you.
My name is Marilyn Gates, I'm with the TCEQ, and we're here to present in our OSIF program today.
I'm Tonya Mitchell, I'm with TCEQ, I'm currently the manager of the OSIF program for TCEQ, and met with the judge and some of the other officials yesterday to talk about OSIF, so.
Thank you, ma'am.
David Elkowitz, I'm the Management Assistant at Big Bend National Park. Don't many of you probably continue with us? Thank you.
Thank you for coming, sir. Marshall?
Marshall McLean, I'm the Executive Representative for Bury County for the OSIF program.
Thank you, sir. Matt?
I'm Peggy O'Brien, with the Rio Grande Council of Governments, and the Coordinator for Get Out the Count for the Census, so we're making this happen.
Appreciate it, thank you for coming in. Let's go right, Steph, I hope they know who you are.
Stephanie Alworth, Emergency Manager, (Inaudible).
Good morning, everyone, I'm Cynthia Mendez, with the Rio Grande Council of Governments.
Appreciate you being here. Let's go to that.
I'm Norma Ayers, I'm with the United States Census Office, and I work for the Brewster County.
Thank you. Judge, real Judge, you're ready by Judge?
Hi, I'm Zoe Sexton, I'm resident of South County for 20 years, and try to get through a lot of these meetings to listen to what you all have going on, and what you voice my opinion.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for coming down here.
Appreciate you being here, ma'am. Sir?
I'm Casey Calando, Sarah's husband, and solar business owner.
Right, proud father. Little Red is up on the street, (Inaudible).
I'm Paul Blais, resident of Brewster County.
I'm Paul Blais, resident of Brewster County. Oh, sir.
Molly Ferney, President of Big Bend Chamber of Commerce and Southside resident.
Yes.
I am Sandra Leos, I'm the Registered Nurse and Telehealth Nurse Manager at the El Paso VA Healthcare System.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for coming in.
(Inaudible).
(Inaudible).
Dave Lambert, South Zone Commander for the American Agent, here with the (Inaudible).
Jackie McCracken, Big Bend Regional Health Hospital.
And Commissioner, I ask, we don't need a quick introduction, we started this with (Inaudible).
Okay, first of all, I'll apologize for coming in a little bit late to the audi attendance in the (Inaudible) Court. My name is Mike Paez, and I represent Precing.
Thank you, sir, appreciate you guys. Miss anybody? Okay, again, we've got a very diverse audience this morning for a reason. We've started to kind of pay more attention, or keep on paying attention to South County, the growth, economic development, tourism, population growth, Airbnbs, all the things that we've heard throughout the past year, five years and a half, we're trying to do our best to stay ahead of the curve. I know that a lot of things that have come our way, you know, Tourism Council, doing a good job, promoting the area, it's working, but along with growth comes added responsibility and sometimes issues, and we have to figure out what to do with that access, you know, solid waste, water issues, and power issues. Before I move forward, there is a kind of, an email or a text message, there's some power outages issues going on as we speak, kind of down towards the lower part of the county. I'm not sure if it affects us, but the lights go off before the projector goes on, don't panic, I mean, it's not, we paid our bill, but Julie did send me an update that there might be, Stephanie, did you hear anything? And I'm not sure where she got it from, but there's supposedly, there might be some interruption of service, which I think is kind of almost ironic that we have guests from a lot of town that might be here for that. We didn't plan it, you know, we're out of our control, you know, I don't have the kind of power to get the AP to shut their switch off in Austin. I'm sorry, yeah, we're not the electric. Good point. But the point being that we're trying to make sure that you guys, the reason why we invited you here to South County, is a lot of folks are familiar with the area, they somehow feel like Alpine and kind of the surrounding area is where the county ends. For those of us that live here, we know there's a whole bunch more going on in South County than we realized, so we're glad you're here, I'm happy that you guys are here today. Okay, we've done the indication, let's move on to the item two of the agenda, minutes, additions, corrections, for approval, Commissioners, you should have minutes for January the 8th in front of you. Again, we were having a little trouble, we didn't have the hard copies, we don't have an opportunity to look through the minutes for that meeting, which is the fifth meeting in January. The motion to approve minutes, as presented, make that Commissioner (Inaudible). My second motion, is presented by Commissioner Paez, any further discussion? All over the table. Aye, aye, (Inaudible). Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Item number three, and I'm sure if you all noticed, but here's a silent sheet, (Inaudible). Congress is looking to file this for first, in pursuit of Texas Open Funds Act, (Inaudible) in his ability to respond to Congress. Do you have one individual pending, or right? Brewster County?
So, Peggy O'Brien, I've recently been hired as the Court, the Get Out the Count Coordinator for this region, Tri-County, and then also as the Coordinator of the County for the Census. And I understand that Norma Ayers is here, and she'll be updating as well later, so we can either speak together, would that be more helpful moving on, or shall I just say (Inaudible)?
I would say, introduce yourselves, since we'll be seeing probably you, and because of your role, we had talked to you about, maybe a little bit of history on that, how your position was actually funded, for me.
Sure, yes, thank you. So, yes, the COG was granted $114,000 from the COG Foundation for Mental Health, and that money will go for the Coordinator position for media and messaging. We are charged with getting out the awareness on top of what the Census 2020 is doing into all of the groups and communities within our communities, because everybody lives so far away, there are extra layers of communication, sometimes, for instance, in Martha and a lot of (Inaudible) county, there are just mailboxes at the post office, there's not hand delivery, and so the government can't send things directly to the (Inaudible), it has to go directly to the homes. And so, in order to get this awareness out, this added effort is to explain the benefits of being counted, that funding in, then the, because last year, I think, the last Census in 2010, this area, I think, was 22% responded out of 100%, and so there are a lot of people here, and the more people together and forecounted, the more funds can come for, you know, roads, infrastructure, school, food, medical, emergency care, that sort of thing. And so, we're trying to get trusted ambassadors from authorities to go out into their faith base groups, veterans, chamber, everybody where people may not be able to get the word. I understand, Turlingwood and very South County, the internet is very spotty, and so, and mail doesn't necessarily get here with regularity, and so, I'm here to just enhance that, basically, and answer questions, and make sure that everybody understands and comes out.
Right, and it really is a team effort, we've been trying to promote this for three, four months now, the Complete Count Committee, you know, Erica and myself, we've actually had meetings in Alpine, and what we're really trying to do is make sure that everybody's counting, because again, so much of this type is tied to funding, in this county, we're right under the 10,000 mark as far as population, I bet if everybody was counting, we'd be way over, we'd be over that threshold, and once we go over, and once we have more accurate representation, federal funds, a lot of things that we are not eligible for right now, we will be eligible, water projects, you know, roads, all these things that we need, I would rather reach out and find ways of funding these initiatives versus taxing our local folks. I mean, I've always been a big believer, if we can get it from the outside, I know it comes with strings attached, but you know what, we'll toll that, if we can help, if this, we're gonna keep our taxes down, we're paying it to the system anyway, just go ahead and get it from the big boys instead of from local folks, and that's kind of my mindset. But thank you, ma'am.
Sure, and one more thing, and Norma, there have been complete count committees, so with each county, there's a committee of stakeholders, of community leaders, and going coordinate with those committees to do a concerted effort, and then get even more detailed progress with the residents, yeah.
Yeah, you're a matter of resource, which is really what we need, is somebody of my direct line, I think it helps with our efforts tremendously, so I appreciate you being here as well, ma'am. I believe, yes. I think that was the only one we had.
Yes, I didn't know I had.
Okay, sir, if you want to make comment, then we'll have to get you signed up. Go ahead, sir.
I didn't intend to say anything when I walked in, but you touched on something.
You said your name, you said your name, (Inaudible).
Oh, my name is Paul Blais. I live, I live in North-South Brewster County.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay, I got you. Because of the (Inaudible).
I'm (Inaudible).
All right, all right, yes, go ahead.
My wife and I and others have had a number of congressmen, relative to issues that arise because of the increase in tourism in South County. And there have been a number of things, such as dumpsters or trash removal, that have been suggested to be paid for with the hotel occupancy tax, and they can't pay. And it's my opinion that as those who use the hotel occupancy tax are successful and bring the increased tourism, that that's an economic benefit to the county, and that means that the vibe of you has some responsibility to see that some of that economic benefit goes into infrastructure, to support those things, those needs that are created by the increased tourism.
Thank you, sir. And just make sure you cite, you know, (Inaudible). Ma'am, did you have a comment?
My name's Molly Ferney, and President of the Big Bend Chamber of Commerce, and to follow behind him, I serve on the (Inaudible), I go and attend a lot of those meetings, and from the 2020 budget, 7% of their budget was allocated for historical preservation. And with our presence on the ground at the Chamber, we hear that we would like more of that, more of their budget to be served, to go back into our community in that way. We feel like 7% is a low amount, considering the, exactly what Paul was saying, the taxes that, not the taxes, but the, what we're experiencing as a community, because there's so many people visiting. And I understand that hot tax can't be used for a lot of things, but it can be used for that specific topic, and we would like to see more of it used for that, so.
And again, I can't really respond to the comments, but I will say that the Brewster County Tourism Council is going to be holding a workshop, what is it, the (Inaudible) bylaws workshop that's coming up? Keep it on the website, because, and that is open to the public, it's a public we, I believe, will be held out here in South County, but keep it on the website, because it didn't come today, they're in Austin, you know, the staff is out, but we're looking at, we're working towards addressing some of the very things you're talking about. The other piece of it is tax code, I mean, there's stuff that we just simply cannot do without making the changes at the state level, as far as all those funds were expended, but we can, but thank you for sharing, I mean, and before you leave, make sure you cite, sign up for the site of chief, but keep it on the website for the workshop, that the Tourism Council is going to be holding, it's the action board and the director, I should be in attendance, not one of us, not both of us. So, just, we're keeping up with, yeah, the growth and the needs that it's bringing with.
Mr. Chairman, is that we're responsible for allocating those funds, or do you all have a say in how that's (Inaudible)?
We do, it's a combination of both, because even though it's hot money, it's still county money, it's taxpayer money, even though it's not our taxpayers, Brewster County is the fiscal agent or everything, so, yes, this Commissioners' Court, we have a private say on budgets.
I understand, we can either approve or reject.
Yes, ma'am, yeah.
We can't tell them how to allocate, but that's the only thing we do, is say yes or no.
Right, and then recommendations, because now our treasurer is also going to be, not a board member, but she'll be attending those meetings, and she can provide us, provide them with feedback on what we can and can't, and vice versa.
Okay, thank you.
So, we're, yeah, yes, thank you very much. Anybody else? And again, if you all, before you decide with the site of chief, if not, let's go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. Okay, number four, presentation by TCEQ Enforcement, Ms. Pat (Inaudible) Mitchell, and Marshall McLean, County Septic Tank Inspector, and just to keep you a little bit of history on how this came to be, about a month, a little over a month ago, Marshall and I were talking about some of the growing needs of the county because of the tourism, the Airbnbs, and all these things that are happening countywide, and a lot of it is happening with this part of the county, you know, and we're getting ready to hit that, that mark as far as vacation and spree break, and so, in the process of him and I talking, you know, it kind of occurred to me that it might be time to greet somebody, either from Austin or Bassel, to come and give us another update, on TCEQ-related kind of issues, and there's some changes coming down the pipe that I was made aware of yesterday, so it seemed like a very timely presentation as far as them being able to make it down here. After the meeting, Marshall did give me a timeless number, phone number, (Inaudible) phone number, and I called, she said, "Well, send me an email," actually, the outlining kind of what is, what are your needs, and what are the expectations of us traveling, you know, down to Brewster County. Sent her an email, this was like on Tuesday, by Friday, I had an answer, which, with the state government, I was just shocked that I got an answer. And that quickly is almost like, and the answer was, you know, "Send me this, so I can justify this." And then I thought, okay, well, that's another (Inaudible), she's here. So, thank you both for coming in, I really, I really do appreciate you all's efforts and timely response to our request. So, just so you know, they didn't come, they didn't force her waiting down here, I asked, I invited them. Go ahead, then.
Okay, well, one, we all have a very enforcement to have a proactive commission on seeing potential things, and now I'm offering even more, because they're doing, I see now the best what they're doing, and they're, I had the philosophy of ounce prevention worth a ton of cure, I'd rather come out here and help prevent a mess than come out and help clean up a mess, so, you all are very fortunate in that, so. Now, I can figure out why I'm making this more (Inaudible).
You would have to use the laptop.
(Inaudible). Authority, Texas Health and Safety Code, Chapter 366, is the state law that requires onsite systems to be managed, maintained, and it requires TCEQ to establish rules, but it also provides for local permitting authorities to be authorized under us, and that's how Brewster County has its authority to regulate septic systems and be your permitting authority, otherwise you'd be having to ask how that's how to come out here and do your systems. And that takes a lot of more work, time, for y'all to do it, and so forth, so you have Brewster County that has Marshall here to help you. Under the obligations of Brewster County's being an authorized agent, they have to ensure that all systems meet the minimum requirements under 30 Tech 285, which is the Onsite Supply Rules, or any more stringent standards that are adopted by the authorized agent in their approval process through us. Complaints must be investigated in 30 days or less. If a notice of violation is issued, anytime, a notice of violation doesn't be issued anytime a violation is actually identified, and if the violations are corrected in time, they must follow the enforcement process that is laid out, both in the rules and in the statute. So, county orders are submitted to us, and we do request to either become an authorized agent, or to amend their order. We get new authorized agents every once in a while, I have a new (Inaudible) just incorporated last summer, that now wants to be an authorized agent, so we don't bring in new ones quite often, but we do bring in new ones. Amended orders, I get those a lot, and they are increasing in their numbers here lately. Most of the amendments that can be made to an order to make more stringent things are things like eliminating the 10-acre exemption, there's the elimination of having installers design conventional systems requiring professional design, there's increasing the lot sizes. A lot of places, especially in East Texas, that have black lymn (Inaudible) clay, they increase the lot sizes, because getting systems on a halfway curve land with the type of soil structure they have is really, really hard, so they increase the lot sizes. And there's ones that prohibit installation of any OSIF in a floodplain, or any part of an OSIF in a floodplain. The minimum standards allow certain portions of a septic system to go into a floodplain within requirements, but when they have lakes or streams or creeks they want to protect, they will make a deal that eliminates the ability to do that. One of the big things that has been coming up, and was even brought to the legislature, was changing or eliminating the 10-acre exemption. Part of the confusion with the 10-acre exemption is, is they read the fact that if it's 10 acres, they don't have to get a permit, and they stop there, they don't finish reading it. Well, actually, they don't have to get a permit, they don't have to submit anything to Mr. Marshall over there, and they don't have to be inspected, but they still have to meet every other rule in that code. But, they're still only exempted as long as they're not polluting, causing a problem that way. If every part of the system is more than 100 foot from the property line, and it also can only be the only single-family dwelling on that property, the moment they put a septic oil on on that property, all the exemptions go away, only applies to single-family, it's not commercial. Anything that is not their residence is not exempted. So, that's really a lot of confusion, I've got more than 10 acres, you can't tell me what to do, I said, "This is for your lumber company's sales office?" No, you have to have a permit. So, that's one of the other things that has confusion. We have over 50, and close to 70% of our orders eliminate this and just don't allow, every system has that requirement, but they have to provide justification. Composting toilets, I was told that that's an issue that there seems to be some confusion about down here, I went to a meeting with the judge yesterday, so, the issue with composting toilets is, is the only way you can use a composting toilet is if it's approved under NSF under standard 41. That's the only way you can have a composting toilet in the same Texas. But, the problem is, is that doesn't eliminate your need for a septic system. Your toilet isn't the only thing that generates waste, you still have to address all the other water effluent that comes from the property, so you should remind it to have a septic. So, now, the question about corripothies comes up, corripothies are not regulated under the Onsite Supply Facility Rules. Corripothies don't have a direct regulation, the only thing that's necessarily regulated about them is how they're pumped, and the waste is disposed of, and the people who do that, and that's not under my purview, that's under a different set of rules. So, that, corripothies are not intended to be a permanent solution, but they don't fall under the Onsite Supply Facility Rules. When it comes to enforcement, some of the requirements on that is that they have to initiate their enforcement process by the statute and the rule after they fail to comply, so the compliance, you've got 30 days to comply, if on day 31 they haven't complied, they have, they're supposed to initiate an enforcement process. Most Onsite Supply Facility violations are Class C, Mr. Peter, that means you get to visit the JP for the majority of that time. The fines are maximum of either $200 or $500 a day, that the violation exists, and so forth. Now, that's on the first time, after that, if you have a repeat of the same events, you're no longer a Class C, you were, it's elevated to a Class B, which then means you go to get to go to county court or district court. And then, there's fines, there are increased plus there's jail time associated with it, so that's how that process works. With the biggest issue that's, and the most volatile violation that we have, is an unauthorized discharge, that is directly into district court, and with that, they can file an injunction and turn off the water to the property until the violation is resolved. So, that is the most aggressive, because there you are impacting an imminent threat to the public health and the environmental health, so that's why that one has more to it. This is our contact information, this is the phone line for our program, this is an email for our program, and it, with the wall, it kind of showed up bad, but we also have the webpage, we have information pages for both homeowners, installers and licensees, and for the regulators, which is resources in there, you can find license information, you can find information about how systems are maintained, you can look at copies of our rules and everything else on our webpage, so, did I miss anything?
No, I think you hit on all the high points.
Oh, no, I did miss one thing, while you were talking, and you talked about funding issues?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, E D A, economically disadvantaged area funding? You cannot receive E D A funding if you're not an authorized agent. So that is one of the other things that Brewster County has made that step forward in is becoming an authorized agent. And that is one of the deals that helps get funding for water and wastewater um, facilities for more, for taking care of that. But to apply for that, you have to be an authorized agent. So you've got that already going for you now.
And, and they do provide a clinical support from our staff due to our E R.
Yes, Mr. Acclaim has an issue. Well, he can, um, call or email us and ask us a question. If he has a more elaborate or complicated design that comes in, we quite frequently get those, especially when it involves restaurants or hotels and things like that that are not a common feature and, and things like that, especially newer E Rs who've just come into the industry to help facilitate their, their understanding of things. New technology issues, you can only have products installed that are alternative treatment products if they're approved by us. And we have an approved products list on our website so that you can know that. Um, we're trying to keep it updated as it's occurring. It's a process we've been working on for a little over a year now to update it and make it more accessible for everyone. And, um, in that, and so if you have a product, you, you can't find it on the list, you can call, I can do a research and see if we have something that just happened to not get in there. Um, but you have to be approved through the state Texas. And that goes back to the composting toilets. Not only do they have to have an N S F standard 41, they also have to submit a request to us and be approved by us to be sold to the state. Um, and that goes for treatments, disposal systems, alternative disposal systems have to be tested and data submitted and approved by us. Um, we, it's connected to the waters of the state.
And just for the audience to kind of put it all in perspective, because there's a lot of information that she just presented and a lot of things that we need to be, to make sure that he can keep up with and keep track of. But I think the biggest thing for us to keep in mind is that there's one guy that covers a real, a huge county. That's the person. Number two, um, this is more, and I, yesterday we told you that we're visiting, that the folks that are following the rules and are, and want to comply and want to do the right thing are the ones that will be here. It's the rascals that don't want to follow the rules, that probably won't be in the audience. And that's our priority is to make sure that we hold accountable those that are not holding themselves accountable. Because at the end of the day, voila, voila. I know that you've got folks that are doing the right thing, they're paying their local taxes, they're doing all the, but then if they know their neighbors are not doing that, that creates a lot of frustration and anger and, you know, discord between neighbors. We don't want that. But we have a way of enforcing it. So we, Marshall, that, you know, county court, district court, that we, we're the enforcement piece of it and we prepare ourselves for, and it won't be the first time. He's not going to go out there, boom, there's $500 fine, everything shut off. There's discretion and he has to use his judgment to a certain extent of, of when, when do they, when does, when does he start the process, you know, formally? And how much of it is like, you know what, I'm giving you a heads up. Before you do that, you better get this done. And, and so there, you know, there's like a human element. We're not going to, we're not the zapping these, but we're going to make sure to get a handle on those because of the role and what's happening with these air V Vs and the flow, you know, I don't want stuff flowing down the river that shouldn't be flowing in the river.
Yes.
You know, kind of thing. So we're looking at, at how to be proactive versus reactive, as I said at the beginning. And I think by them coming down, that's, that's our, this is our first or our next step to what he's doing and what we can do as a county. But at the end of the day, y'all probably have information that we don't. So the more that we're made aware of things, we can do something about it, so. And it's not a, you know, we got that hotel, but let's work together.
Well, I mean, that one, when I do some of my, some of Texas, take care of her. She takes care of us. It's weird that way. I, I'm a pro, I like water, water. So, um, to me, water is the most precious thing in the state. And it's the thing we got to lease up in the state. So if anything that we can do to protect it is all the better. Onsite wastewater is one, uh, 35, 37,000 permits per issue last year for onsite septic systems. That's new systems going in. Five years ago, it was 28,000. So it's not going away. It's one of the best deals, it recharges off of first and everything else. But you got to do it the right way or you're contaminating our water.
To ruin it.
So.
And, uh, and we want to leave a little bit of time for community. I mean, she may have, and again, she, she mentioned, she presented a lot of material, but, but they're here and they're, they're the source that if something goes south and we will either call them or we're not attacking them while T C Q. And as you said, I'd rather her come in to present as a proactive position than come in and zap us because of what we didn't do or Marshall failed to do or, you know, we don't want that, so.
And one more thing I want to point out is that the county is the office that you're there in and, um, enforcement for this, and, um, Mr. Kane is the designated representative. Um, so they will, as well, if you have a problem, you can touch with us. We'll give you a number or please, please send us an email or give us a call. And if it's something that we need to pass on with them, we do have a work as a partnership with your county. So the county does enjoy your listening program. However, we are available in our office to assist with any of the concepts of placement for the county if you have any questions or concerns.
Thank you. And again, for those in the audience, if you have any questions, I mean, we do have some time set aside for you guys to either ask or go and get feedback. And even with today's presentation, if it wasn't at all, you feel it wasn't at all helpful or useful. I got, I have a thick show.
It was brief, I made it last night after meeting with the judge, so it was very brief.
Yeah, yeah, and, and she, yeah, she did like a six hour presentation, like an hour and a half. So she condensed, so yeah, just so you know, this was a condensed version of that.
Yes, very, very condensed.
Yeah, we appreciate her, her time and effort.
I can talk a lot.
And she knows a lot.
I have to be brainwashed.
Even when you have all this knowledge in your head, I mean, it's almost like, no matter what is said, you know a whole bunch about that certain stuff.
Yeah, sometimes my brain sends stuff to my tongue faster than my tongue can do it though. But now I'm more knowledgeable questions, but again, the state of Texas prefers that things be handled locally. And that's upon the legislature and their inside back in 1986, when this statute began its process. They made the availability for local authorized agents to be there because local control is best. They know the issues here and can better address and protect their citizens and their constituents than the people often.
Never, never.
That town I live in now, oh, I'm a West Texas girl, so this is more home than Austin. Uh, so, uh, we, but that's one of the things is they're your authorized agent. We transfer that to them, but we do hold them accountable. We do, can perform audits of them and ensure that they are following the enforcement process. And, and we issue them letters and things and say, uh, this is where we need you to approve. Um, Brewster County had kind of a problem with that. Um, but your nearest office is the El Paso office and they have a team of people that handle O S S F. But there are counties that don't permit around here that they have to drive out and do the inspections for and stuff like that. But, um, we have 372 authorized agents in the state of Texas. And that's the cities, counties, and special districts is what we call them. Special districts can be water districts, river authorities and things like that. Um, so we have 372 of those to let them manage and protect their citizens and their health. The one thing is unauthorized discharges means there's raw sewage on the ground. That's breeding mosquitoes, breeding flies, carrying disease and contaminated water.
And Tyler mentioned something that I think all of us are very, very, very well aware of is, you know, the water and that thereof. Being where we're at in this part of the state, that times 10. I mean, because we know how scarce and how valuable that one resource. Without that, I don't care how much marketing you do as a tourism council, it'd dry up. I mean, if you didn't need water, we'd all be troubled, you know, obviously. But so we, in this part of the state, I think that's the local control piece of it that we need to keep that in mind. Whenever we're doing our job, it is, okay, how do I prioritize these things? And obviously water was, it's, it's one of the biddels, in the desert especially. But here, that times 10 because we're, it's, it's very scarce. But, um, Tyler, thank you. And I don't, they, I'm not, I'm not brushing them out here, they got to get back on the flame.
We got to, we got to build one till I come back.
So, and that's why they, uh, but again, they do have a little bit of, you know, kind of wiggle room. So I mean, I don't want y'all to feel shortchanged with the cousins. So if anybody does have any feedback or anything you guys want to ask or, again, myself, um, Marshall, or the local, you know, folks that can kind of answer some, I can answer basic, he knows a little more technical stuff. If we want to bump it up, we can bump it up, but this is the source.
It's like a video.
Yes, yes, yeah. She's a walking, yeah, walking encyclopedia, which is, I'm really glad.
Honestly, that's my, my eyes are brown. Yes ma'am.
Could you please say more about the support that's available for the economically challenged areas?
Oh, that's an economically disadvantaged, uh, E D A, economic disadvantaged area program. Um, well, I don't participate in E D A, but the E D A statute, um, states that you do not receive funds unless you are an authorized agent. That's what I know of it. And so that's why I have a lot of leases, especially along the Rio Grande and more south Texas. And that you'll notice that all of them are authorized agents because the colonials and things like that got funding to help develop some infrastructure, mostly for water lines. Um, some of it was for wastewater, but mostly it was for water down there. Um, and it's still a program. It's, you have to actually, you'll bring some water on board is the one who oversees that? Okay, I think they're the one who manages that part. Is, and Texas Department of Health has something to do with it too or something, I don't know. But all I know is in the statute, that's why I get, I'm aware of it is because in their statute says you have to be an authorized agent. That's the reason I have to go. I'm, I'm the, I'm the, I'm the poo, the outside of poo, I don't know.
But you're good at that.
What is that, you're the individual who applies funding or the county?
Um, those programs work differently, I don't know. Yes, our small business, government, um, division, they will be a wealth of knowledge. They're what I call my little angels. Um, because if you have a question about solid waste issues or you have a question about hazardous waste, you have a question about construction materials, you have a question about smells or anything like that, they have people that answer those questions and they are for small governments like Brewster County, it will qualify as a small government. Um, they can answer questions. Everything they have is confidential. Any communication, I would, that was confidential. Yes ma'am.
Uh, and this is probably more toward you, Connor. This has been 10, 15, 20 years ago. There was an economic program that funded septic systems for individuals here. That obviously did not come from these guys.
No ma'am, we do not have any.
So where did that come from? And is there a possibility?
It came through the colonial grounds.
Okay. Cause it was for individuals, it was not for publics.
Yeah, it came through colonial.
You know, and, and there's different versions that pop up, you know, time and, and back to your question. I think a lot of what this is going to take is, is identifying the needs and then doing like a needs assessment of the, the, the area. Because the needs here are different than the needs around Alpa or America. Then as a county, obviously we can do our part by saying, okay, what is out there that we qualify? And then we're eligible for. Um, back to the census, you know, once you hit that 10,000 mark, then you're eligible for a whole different pot of money. So there's different pots of money that we could actually pull from. But we got to do our, do all the network lead up to the application piece of the process. But whatever help y'all can provide by all means, I mean, you know, they'll see, they'll see what you, do some research and we'll get to the point of, okay, we need to get your signature on this, you know, document to go to the next step. Before commissioners court will sign off, the next thing you know, we're, the momentum is there. She's a resource, you know, and I think that's where, I, I appreciate you coming down because that helps us kind of think in terms outside of our county.
She can add to that.
Yeah, I can see.
Well, yes ma'am. I can get you in contact with the regional, um, small business representative out of El Paso. I just talked to her the other day, so.
And, and just, just to clarify, just, um, a little bit of your title is that we should kind of put it in perspective.
It's a regional services coordinator. So I manage the grants for solid waste and for homeland security.
Through the council of governors. So she's from El Paso, but these folks, I mean, this is, that's their specialty. You know, they kind of figure out how to connect the dots, you know, with local government versus state and the feds. And they're very, they're very good at it.
So I'll give, okay.
I think, I mean, I think the, the reason I keep circling back to this is realistically, we don't have a community waste system scenario that's reasonable here at any time in the near future. But we definitely have, have had, and it hasn't changed in 25 years. We, there was a program that dealt with individuals. It didn't deal with communities. It didn't deal with wastewater, I mean, La Jitas and Big Ben Motoran, to my knowledge, are the only two.
Entities.
Entities that are, well, I think in motoran doesn't count, it's basically La Jitas. And, and not very much, that's their hotel. So I think the question is, what is there available through you that's paced more toward that colonialist thing? That was individual septic systems that got put out all over this place.
25, 30 years.
And Ruben, you can go to that.
10 years.
Yeah, those were all my types, like to me.
We did about 75 systems.
Yeah, I mean, it was, it was a bunch of systems down here and they were all individuals. It had nothing to do with a town.
It's all in, uh, we got off of that from the septic systems to help the water system. There's only, you can only apply for so much money. And it was one or the other, you need to wait. Um, and that's where the emphasis went to water.
Went to the Tralagel water system.
To help them and get the tank and run the lines and do the well. Um, and then we, we got spanked there and we didn't qualify for any money for about three years now. I think this coming year, we'll, we'll be able to get back on the, on the, get on the handout to, to get back in there.
And so at that point, we've got to commissioners to make a decision on whether it's going back to that septic system scenario or the water department.
Yes, you just got to weigh what the needs are for the, for the, for the region.
For the area, yeah. And I think that's where the needs assessment comes back into play. You know, is what are the current needs, what are the present needs?
And then we, their, their funding got cut back so bad that we alternated one, one time marathon, one time down here, one time marathon, one time down here. So, um, because of the, the size of the money there. If you, by the time you paid a, um, an engineer to do their assessment for two projects out of $300,000, there was no money left to do anything. So, I mean, so, and just according to what money's out there for us to apply. But we are.
So a needs assessment from this community, it will determine what you guys decide.
Give them a hard look, it's pretty interesting.
Yeah, and you're not going to satisfy everybody.
Oh, no, no.
You know, I mean, you might think that your project, your priority is septic. This lady might think that she wants water, you know, and, uh, so.
Yeah.
You just got to rate it and what's, what's going to work and what's going to serve most people at that time or what money's there.
And, and, and as a lead into the next presenter, I, I think it's crucial to keep this in mind, that our census, the number of people in Brewster County is going to open up a whole other door for other pots of money that we, because in the past, I mean, the 10,000, we've never, we've never officially gotten to that number. So, and, and I'm glad the census is here because I think that'll help us kind of figure out, okay, this is a whole other door that we're in a whole other room now because of what we went through, which, which would help us with some of the T D A and some of the grants that are out there, uh, C D P G and things like that. We could now qualify for other resources that in the past we've never been able to.
People want, um, help, but they also need to realize they need to be counted. And that's the most important thing.
Right.
It really helps, it really does. I, I mean, we know there's people here that we could reach, you know, we know the lock gates and stuff.
Right.
Um, I'm, I'll elaborate more when we get to the, to the census deal.
But, and, and you see how all this is tied into the environment? Environmental stuff, water, sewage, growth, economic development, T C Q. You've got a lot of players that are kind of playing in the same sandbox, so to speak. So to me, today was more about, look, their resources, but there's also, we're common, common sense and we're happy if things are happening. We just got to, we try to get ahead of all things, but there's a lot of moving parts. So I think that the more information is powerful and the more that we know, the more proactive we are, we can prevent, you know, not everything, but we can prevent a lot of problems to come along with. problems that come along with, with growth is on plan. You mentioned Austin.
Yeah.
I don't know how many of you have been in Austin lately, but that traffic is, it's miserable, it's horrible, because the growth and the infrastructure, it just, it, it has a hard time sustaining the growth, okay? I don't wanna become Austin, but, but we have other issues to worry about, and if we don't get ahead of it, five years from now, we're gonna be dealing with some really crazy issues that we've never even thought possible. So if we don't do it now, I think we're gonna have to be able to make it.
Um, our SCBGA group has a one, eight hundred number, they have, um, people scattered throughout the state, um, we have twenty, a lot of people staffed in that community. Um, there is always someone that will man that monitor in working hours and everybody has to read, any voice messages left is responded to, um, and they have an email as well. So any small businesses or anything else that has questions or issues they're facing too, they can go to them and they're worried about regulation that they think is gonna affect on the having to explain to them.
So I would also let you know that there are programs that assist individuals. Um, I don't know for OSSF whether there is one, I would encourage you to contact the small business local government representative in El Paso, and if there is something to assist people with their septic systems, you know, you can do that information. And this, there, there are also programs for local governments, I think there are also programs for certain areas, and, and I don't know if the OSSF are doing this, but we work a phone call.
The small business local government people have a info sheet, I need to give an updated copy of it, that talks about assistance on your septic system, um, most of it is the rural development districts, um, but TCQ proper, um, OSSF program does not have anything to provide assistance on that, all we do is guidance on regulation. Periodically through different COGS throughout the state, they obtain funding in different ways that helps fund some, certain local areas with replacement of septic for certain people, and when I was a county DR at one time, years ago, we had one of those programs come through and we got to replace fifteen systems along the lake of people with low income, but I was low mental toll, I don't know what that was about. So there are programs out there, it's just, there's very little, um, funding for it in the most part, because they mostly focus on increasing certain sewage or the big priority is, is having drinkable water, that's the biggest priority is drinkable water. But there are programs out there of various types, it's being able to find those funding avenues, COGS are a great source for helping locate what that is, um, but, um, TCQ proper does not have the right funding.
Yeah, and, and I think in the interest of time, um, I know that, that, I'm sure that I mentioned, if you're a residential, you know, individual civic tanks versus a hotel or a resort, but I think our offices are good source, you know, kind of a way of filtering things from the county justice office, because I do go to El Paso once a month, at minimum. So they, they actually, once I know what the ask or what the need, then I can kind of pass it upstream and connect the dots. I mean, I think the guy had to make it happen, but I know, I know the guy or the person that might help make it happen. So I, I think that's where the role of county government comes in, you know, whether it's come to my office, Commissioners Court, talk to your commissioners. I think that's probably because she's here, she, she, she's your neighbor.
Office hours, everyone did.
And we.
They should have five speakers.
And you'll see.
Right.
And, and you know, all of us trying to do our best to be available, but if all those fellows call my office, come by, make it a point, make sure I'm there, but, but I'd be more than glad, or simply you know, because then I can kind of start the process of, you know, what they mean bouncing over here, and we can get the ball rolling, you know? And a lot of these things are very time sensitive, if you miss a deadline, you're stuck for next year, that's the other part of it, and we can stay on top of those. Uh, but a lot of this stuff's gonna require county commissioners to sign off on some kind of agreement or some kind of resolution, so we need to be in the room, as much as we need to, but we can help the same thing. Um, Ms. Tanya, thank you. Uh, we appreciate anything else, any other pressing needs, if you want to, just kind of give her a chance before she leaves.
Another question from Marshall, please. Uh, Marshall, you, as you work throughout the county, and we have the largest county in the state of Texas, landwise, and the growth that's taking place, are we looking at a lot of people that are in compliance with their septic systems or what are you facing?
Oh, they just, uh, they'll pop up with anything, just about, and, uh, applying to the radar. I would say you see a cabinet out in the middle of nowhere, and then got their own little thing, and, uh, that's, uh, that's what we're trying to get away from.
Um, one thing to point out is what everybody calls the out house or whatever the cesspool's borehole or whatever, those are prohibited for use in the state. You are not to have that. Out houses are not allowed anymore. Um, so anybody wants to say, well, go to the out house, no, you can't do that. Um, cesspits, all of that's been prohibited for decades now, and, um, so anyone who actually thinks that you can do that because you have more people wanting to do more natural or whatever type of life living in camping style, that can't be done. Um, the, the composting toilets and things like that and stuff like that, our options evolved into, that's the only thing being done there is to go back to the water camping, um, to have that, but anything that's gonna have ignition or food prep or any of that, then you have to have cesspits.
Cool question. Okay, thank you ma'am. Appreciate your time and, uh, we stay. No, no speed, once you get out of what you're counting.
Do you need to talk to her about it?
Anybody catch that?
There's plenty of border patrol and state trippers along the way.
Oh, yeah, you're, you're set, you're safe, if you break down, you'll be, you'll be okay.
It's a test.
Uh, yeah. Well, thank you again.
I'm glad y'all brought the sheriff in, was to make sure I catch that.
I'm telling her, get to go, while the sheriff's here, tell her. Okay, uh, let's move right on up into, uh, number five, an update on 2020 census by the twelve. Yeah, I'm sure even Brian's who's on the.
Yeah, she'll be here tomorrow, so just, you know.
Okay, she'll be alone, okay, but no, go ahead ma'am, if you want to give us a quick update or, and just, um, whatever you think you need, uh, practical, you need to share with us this morning.
So the census is done every ten years, every ten years we count all the people that live in the state.
I'm sorry, introduce yourself to the.
Oh, I'm sorry, I am Nora Hares, I'm a partnership specialist with the Census Bureau. I work with Charlene, um, she's our senior partnership specialist. Um, well, again, uh, we count everyone, uh, we are a nonpartisan agency, so it doesn't really matter for us who is, uh, in the government, we still have, our duty is mandated in the Constitution, so we have to do it. Um, we also protect, the, the information is given to us under Title XIII, so it's never shared with any agency whatsoever, it's just for the purposes of collecting data and information of the number of people that live in certain parcel. Um, we have been working really closely with Judge Cannon, he has a really great, um, working CCC, that's a conference committee, that committee is formed of different members of the community that help us get out the information about the census, why is it important, why you should participate, how you can participate. This, um, this is the first year ever that we can answer our census online, there are nine questions, you can go online starting March second, and you can answer there. Now, it would be nice if you could wait and get your card, because your card has a code. So if you receive mail at your house, the card will be mailed at your house. If you don't, then we're gonna have a person draw the card at your location, your home or wherever it is that you are. Um, the card has a code, you can go online and put the code in and you can collect your census, you don't have to, you know, fill it out by hand. Also, you can call in, and they have thirteen different languages, so you can call in, give your information, and, um, done. If you do not do that, then around May, we'll have enumerers out there knocking on doors. So May thirty-first, if you have now answered your census, someone will come knock on your door between June and July, July thirty-first, we are done. If you did not get counted by that day, you are not gonna count. So, um, an update on operations, uh, we are starting to call people. Oh, good news, we're out of the red.
Oh.
Yes, yes, so we're at fifty percent. We needed a hundred ninety-seven people in Rooster County to be able to complete our census operations, we're at ninety, which means we're at fifty percent.
Okay, and, and if you would, just kind of expect, I know that, but just, it's kind of a deal.
Right, so it's a big deal because, um, uh, normally what we, what we prefer is to have people from the local community to the, you know, to the enumeration, you know, go around the streets or approach the houses or different, you know, businesses and help us with enumeration. If it's people from the community, it's people you know, so you're gonna be more likely to, you know, give them information and help them out. If we gotta recruit people from Denver or California or Chicago, they don't know your community, so that's just gonna be, you know, an extra burden that they have, and I know that, I think about ten years ago, but twenty years ago, there was an issue bringing a lot of people from outside to complete your, your, you know, the count here. So they have been, you know, trying to get recruiting up on these counties, um, Judge Cannon knows how much we have worked on that, and we're at fifty percent, which means right now we have exactly the amount of people we need, but we know how that goes, if they don't pass the background.
Right, and, and, and if we just kind of piggyback on what you just said, we're still looking for more help. And eighteen dollars an hour is what the hourly rate is.
The day is supposed to last, pay weekly, you know, work between three and thirty-nine hours a week, whichever ones you have available.
You know, and, and there's a minimum, how many hours, a minimum?
Three.
Three hours, three hours up to, I'm sorry, what was it?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine, so right at thirty-nine. I mean, I've had folks tell me they made a couple thousand dollars every two weeks, you know, back ten years ago.
Right.
Because of the mileage and the, the hourly rate, um, but we've been having a hard time recruiting folks to help.
Down here, let me, down here, this, at the post office is where you need to post what you're gonna post, okay?
I thought we did, we did a lot of telephones?
People, that's where people, where we get their information?
I dropped them off, you know, just there. I dropped them off.
I know, but I mean, and, and to get people from down here to help you, and you just gotta come down here and recruit, talk to the local people that are here that, that have been here a long time, you know?
Well, and we, I'm sorry, but we have been recruiting, we've, as far as the complete county committees, we've, we've been reaching out to the local folks, but, but to your point, it's how, you know, we've asked them to come, and that's one of the reasons why this is here today, is to get.
We have tomorrow, too.
Yeah, tomorrow will be here, here, correct?
I mean, one of you guys is from Fort Davis, was doing South American, and I just happened to know him, but if I didn't know him, I mean, he wouldn't even know where to start looking, okay? I mean, he's reached out to me and because we've been friends a long time, and I've been able to help him say, this ranch, you know, he keeps sending me, I wanna go there, so don't go, there's nobody there, and nobody lives there, you know, and so, stuff like that, people here could do the same thing, you just gotta right, find the right person that, that's your contact.
Yeah, well, yeah. So if you guys think of us, we, we welcome it, because, yeah, I'm in the South, Charlene is in the Midwest, and we are the closest ones to you guys, so.
And any close enough.
Right.
I'm a little bit, yes, I'm a little bit, yeah, because that's what I'm really interested in, um, getting with the complete county committees and seeing who's among them, and because of this very thing, you know, like, it's so individually oriented, that's why people are out there too, you know, they just, they wanna do the wrong thing, but just, um, to be able to get the word out from trusted people, you know, friends, like, you, you know, that guy in Fort Davis, maybe he mentioned you, and that's why you told him, you know, so that's how information, I think.
Yeah, I helped him do thirty miles of, of visit, you know, and we did it in probably forty-five minutes, which was, he couldn't have done in, in two months.
Yeah, forty-five days to do, did, but it's true.
And that's why we get the trusted voices and friends and people and community leaders.
Johnny come down here and visit with the people and come around and interact, go through the chamber, whatever it takes to, to hook you up with the right people. I mean, so many people are immune, but there's still some here that have been here over twenty years, twenty-five years, that can help you get to other places that the new people don't know, you know?
You know, and, and you came on board with, that's.
Last week.
Yeah, so, so just to clarify, I mean, they've been at the distance.
On.
A year.
Yeah, that's good.
Well, except for.
I don't remember if you're a.
You're a customer. But definitely, yes, sir.
I'm gonna make a suggestion.
Okay.
That you go directly to the office of the Terlingo Ranch, because they know our those several hundred parcels, for the most part, they know which ones are occupied by residents, and that's a good resource for you to try to game plan how to find people up there, because there's nobody that has as much data as they do as to where to find people on the Terlingo Ranch.
Well, good, that's good, good feedback, I'm glad you made that mention. I'm glad you were here, I'm glad you're here today.
Okay, also, we are, because of recruitment is almost done, February twenty-eight, twenty-nine, recruitment is done, uh, we are starting to call people up and we need to have training sites, like this location will be a perfect training site, we need to have like in each area, one training site at least, the location has to have internet, has to at least hold between twenty and thirty people, and, uh, has to be available all day, for just like a day for the next, starting on February thirteenth to the end of February.
This is available.
Okay, go for it, please, no one.
Yeah, the internet is an issue.
Oh, you, you guys don't have internet here?
No.
We can, we're, we don't have.
Oh, I heard this rule.
Well, I'm not, I'm still down.
You're a senior.
You have a hotspot?
Yes.
Yeah, you can, you can use a hotspot.
The fire department has a train room.
Yeah.
And it has wifi.
The fire department has, there's a main, there's a room there that's.
He's a keeper of, of that, of that, that, so before you leave, chat.
Okay. I will talk to them. Um, we also have several national days, um, and we shared some hosts with you, uh, beginning of February, the thirteenth, we have undercount of young children, the number one group that is undercounted every year is children under five. People count themselves, you know, all adults, but they don't count the kids, and that means a lot for the community, so not just at schools, they get a lot of money from census data, but also just for the community to get those counts higher. Um, so we're having that day, the whole week is gonna be doing activities with that, I'm actually meeting with, um, also, uh, we also have in March sixteenth is the Media Blitz Day, and you guys do have media I, I don't know how you can get it, but they did say that Rooster County had media I, so that means they're gonna have buy into whatever radios or whatever, if, you know, structure you got here for communication. Um, um, we also have March second to the sixth, the school statistics in school, the nationwide campaign will be focused on children in schools, and we'll have activities in almost all the locations, I know Alpine, we already have a set of readings in the classrooms and just different things, just to get the kids talking about it, so when they get home, they can get the parents thinking about census and how good it is for their community. March second to the twenty-first, all cards will get mailed out to the houses, on the twenty-first, we'll have, um, the first set of enumerers putting, um, going around and putting the cards at the locations that do not receive mail. Uh, they do not have to knock, they will leave the card at your location somewhere in your door or somewhere like that, they're not knocking at that time, if you're out, they may hand it to you, but there is not, they're not required to talk to you. They will be identified by having this same thing I have in here, your badge, and a lot of them will have laptops, uh, but we'll let the local sheriff know, know about it so they can inform you, so when you see them, you're not freaked out about it. Um, April first is census day, we'll have a nationwide rollout, um, the ad campaigns, et cetera, we actually have a campaign, uh, an ad going through, um, Super Bowl, so, yeah. Let me see if Charlene's got anything else. Here it is. No, that's, that's pretty much, um, what's, what I'm.
Can you wish tomorrow's activity, so what exactly are we to expect tomorrow?
No, we, Charlie and I will be for the next three days here, and we're gonna be visiting all here in Terlingo, and also, and we'll do some in Mariposa and also back in Alpine, but mostly tomorrow, they're here.
Okay, well, make sure, again, Brad Pennington, is a resource here locally, it's one.
We're gonna go make up names.
Tomorrow, well, no, probably not till Thursday afternoon or Friday.
Thursday?
No, Thursday.
Oh, yeah, I forgot.
Yeah, but we'll, we'll, we'll.
Okay, we had a question.
Your counterpart was down here last month, spoke at the Family Crisis Center, goes around, you know, American Legion.
Yes.
American Legion told him at least twice a week, it would be open for people to use computers, laptops, in private areas. American Legion told them at least twice a week, it would be open for people to use computers, laptops, in a private area. If you don't understand, he said you can bring laptops. Wifi or not, they ain't gonna work in most of, anything, ten miles north of here. Uh, unless you get to the ranch, unless you get to the American Legion. Uh, that's about it. So we told them, if you guys want it, we'll open it. It's gonna be open two days a week, sure, anyway, possibly five, but they, that would be access that has wifi inside the building. They can come in, do the, their nine questions and, regardless.
Okay.
So, we told them, and they came to visit it with the, trying to recruit.
Yeah.
So to add on to what was mentioned earlier, Tillingham Fire Department EMS has a very large facility that has a room that has all of that, you know, and that is located at the Emergency Response Center, right here. Either Ed Marquado, who is the president of the board, or, uh, Marcus, who's on the fire team, or Greg Pennington can give you the information on it. It is, it is a room that is only used by, it's not used a lot. There's not a big closet. Secondly, a per, a question, how does somebody apply to become a census taker?
Uh, all you need to just go to Google lines, do twenty-twenty census, not go slash jobs. It's just, yeah, and it's very simple, it's not like really long, many things, probably like, it'll take you like ten minutes.
So did I understand correctly, you were still trying to apply people?
Yes.
We have, so you needed, and it's anywhere from three hours to thirty hours.
To thirty-nine, you can't go past thirty-nine.
But they can work as few as.
Yeah, that's three hours. And whichever hours they have available, it could be weekends, it could be evenings or mornings, whatever is available. And we pay for gigs and some off, they pay weekly too, so that, that way, kind of enticing people. So they try to give them their money as fast as they can.
So that ad in the Tillingham Room will probably go on a million times, unfortunately, you help them, just have wifi.
I was going to suggest that if you have things you'd like to share in our online newspaper. Um, we updated on Monday at noon is the cutoff for that week, and it's just a once a week thing. But if you send the information to tillinghamroom@gmail.com.
Okay.
And that's.
By noon Monday.
And this, and the, and she's a source for that.
Okay, okay.
I thought it was John Waters, wasn't it?
There are eight of us editors that.
Oh. Mr. John Waters is here as well, he's a big, big gazette.
Okay.
And he's back there, so there's another source for publication, and, and a lot of it is, is, I mean, it's, it's out, it's a, Brewster County is a whole, but a lot of it is here.
Is that weekly too?
What was the cutoff, John? For yours? The cutoff for, come out in?
We come out most month, and the cutoff is the twenty-fifth of the preceding month.
Okay.
So it's, the cutoff, we just rented our February edition, so the next, that might be February twenty-fifth.
Okay.
Late for recruiting.
Maybe for, maybe for the other events.
Yeah.
Awesome, keep that, give you a good.
And if you guys think about anything that the census can make a presence, that it's something the community attends, and we can talk to people, and just let us know through Joe County or through, you know, through the census office here.
One of the idiosyncrasies of our community is the rural delivery of mail. And having been in the area for twenty-five years, how many conversations have I had? Oh, we can't deliver to that address, that's not your mailbox. HC seventy box is my mailbox on the street. But we've recently gone to the EMS addresses, but how do you, or how has, has that been taken into account?
No, if, if your mailbox is not attached to your house.
It's at my.
Yeah, so then they.
It's not on my house, but that's my front yard, no.
Somebody will have to come and physically put it at your house.
Okay.
So unless the mailbox would be attached to the house, they would.
Attached to the house.
Yeah.
You're not gonna find that here, so I guess just count that out.
Who made that rule and, I mean, I know, I know you.
You're our favorite.
But I gotta tell you that it isn't just here.
Yeah.
We, we had a place in Angel Park, New Mexico, zero mailroom, one hundred percent boxes at the post office. So there's a community of X thousand people, and somebody's gonna have to wander around and stick something on every condo and every house.
You don't have to go that far, go to Presidio.
Just gonna say.
Presidio's mailbox at the post office only.
Same with Martha.
Right, it's Martha.
I mean, this is the same.
Well, and it can, but, but I think that's, that's, that's what, that's what we're trying to do, is get the word out, to figure out where those, where those pockets are at, so we can figure out how to get word out to those pockets. I mean, and I.
And I need locals.
Yeah, and I hear what you're saying, but we can't change.
Well, I know we can't change.
At this point, at this point.
It's insane, at this point, you know?
But I.
Anybody ten years from now, something will be bad.
You know, even worse is that when they did address canvassing, um, last year, uh, this area wasn't canvassed. So if there's any new locations that have popped up from, you know, ten years ago, we don't know about it.
It's out of Brewster County, it's probably double.
Well, you see, there's a way, you have, I think to the middle, middle, end of February to, you know, kind of like update the record, and we're supposed to do it by hand, but we're not supposed to look for that. We're supposed to like, oh, look, there's a house here. So we don't know that information, so if we don't get it from you guys, we can't update it with them. So then when we send those enumerators, they're not gonna know that these houses are there because they're.
That's why I say go to ranch office.
Yeah, we need to do that, we definitely.
When are the enumerators coming, you know, same June?
No, the enumerators will come mid-March. Yeah, so they're gonna, they're not, yeah, but they're not gonna be talking to anyone, they're just gonna be dropping those cards with the codes. Because the code, just tell them your location, so that way you don't have to put your address. Now, if you want to, you can just go online, March second, just put your address. You physically have to put your address. Say, I do not have a code. There can be two options, I have a code, I do not have a code. You click, I don't have a code, and just put your address, and that's fine, you can do it, and you're done. But if you wanna wait, if you wanna wait, then, then you have to wait till that numerator drops it at your house. Yes, sir.
You just mentioned last time this area wasn't canvassed, what do you mean by that?
No, the last time that this area was canvassed.
It wasn't canvassed last year, it's.
No, address canvassing, okay, so address canvassing is a special operation that happens around August or September of the year before, so, you know, the past year. And they send some people around, and they go with a map, and they say, oh, this house is here, check. Oh, look, here's a new house, let me add that. So that's what the address canvassing does. So in this area, there was no address canvassing done. So we don't, like, the, people that we spend out in the field are gonna have a map of ten years ago. So they're not gonna know any new locations. So any houses that popped up in the last ten years, that's not, you know, gonna be showing there. So that's gonna require them to actually physically add it, you know, call the, the office and go past and tell them, oh, look, I figured out there's a new house here, so, you know.
So will they go to that house?
Well, they're not required to go to that house, but most of them were to be told that if you see something physically that is not in your map, you need to let us know, because then they have to update the map too. So the map has to show, you know, we dropped something there, and that's a new code that has to be created for that house.
You know, and I think all the reason I have local folks doing that work, because they'll know where the new house is at.
That's, it sounds like we have to do an address canvass before we can do a complete count. They didn't do one last summer.
Well.
Well, then if you did put something on a house that's not, that they're on, that isn't on the map, first you have to add it to the map, and then you have to do it twice.
So, yeah, so they will have to call up and say, hey, there's a new location here, and then they'll have to get a code for the location.
But you can't make a call in ninety percent of the area.
No. This is why I'm saying, we need to get this information to them, so then they can update those maps when they come down and.
We need to do that soon.
So are you working with the Brewster County Appraisal District? Because they know, they tax.
They haven't counted the house either.
Yes, sir.
I have a question for the council. I have a question for the council of governors, because you assign nine-one-one addresses.
Yes.
Do you have a roster of the nine-one-one addresses which you have assigned?
I'm sure they do. There are two personnel, one up in Alpine, and one in El Paso, and I'm sure you would have some kind of data, definitely, to us as, um, yes.
Because if somebody moves in and, and they're different drivers license, and they have to have a nine-one-one address, it's the council of government that assigns them. And if census somehow can use that roster of nine-one-one addresses as a resource, that can be a backstop to the fact.
Preferably GPS coordinates attached to.
That, that can be a backstop to the fact, but when you did address, yes.
So, uh, Stephanie, uh, our EFC back here, whenever she gets back to Alpine or something, take them over to the nine-one-one top.
Top, yes.
And, and link them up, just to make sure that they have information that we have, as much as we can release, some others there's.
Sure, that's my question, is how much information is he allowed to give them?
Yeah. And, and we need to figure that out, to see.
And honestly, we only need the new locations from ten years ago.
Well, that's what the girl has had, is in the last two years. But, but, but I think it's a really good point that you're making, is that if we're looking at data that's more than ten years old, it's almost like, well, we're gonna miss. Yeah, we're gonna miss what's happened and what the current state of affairs is, but what does a profile look like today? And that's what we want, is to make sure that.
But we also can inform the community that no one drops a card, you can go ahead and do it, you can go online and do it, you do not have to wait for that card. No one came to your house and dropped a card, just go ahead, call the phone, go online, you know? Because they are gonna, you know, they're not even, we're, we're trying to recruit as many people as we can, but we're at fifty percent, you know, Brewster, so, which is good, but it might be higher than that.
Can we set up some, like, uh, stations, computer stations around, tell people, like, if you need to go online?
We will have those.
Come to the Tillingham Ranch Lodge, come to the, the Legion, come to.
You'll see.
Anywhere.
We are, we, come up to A C's, questionnaires, student centers, and we will have one in each community. And as we see the numbers rolling in, and we see which, which communities are low, in response, we'll have more of those in those communities. So, yeah.
And geographically is, is the bigger concern here, because I mean, if you live in this, it's no big deal to go to Tillingham and vice versa, but if you live up on Legion, coming down to the ghost town is kind of a pain in the butt. And if you're over in heat, is if you have to go over the league, then, and you need to, my opinion, for what it's worth, is that geographic distances are more important than the quantities. I think that's, you're, you're gonna miss the people who are out on the car, which is, they just, they can't drive that far.
We definitely have some.
Sure. Rapidly accessible.
Yeah. And as many as, like, if we can use two places or three or whatever, as many as we can.
Right, that's what I was thinking, um, we, because we have, um, as part of our grant, that's tablets and hotspots. And so we can coordinate with you, and then you don't need, maybe here in the fire station, we can be, you know.
Thank you for that grant, because I understand the state of Texas didn't allocate any funds to helping the census.
Right.
And, and thank the council, because they don't want to actually, they, they applied, and they were able to get some. Anyway, yeah, it's all kind of, you know.
So.
Yeah, and, and I think, the, the, my takeaway is gonna be a group effort, but it's gonna be our effort. Most gonna come down and, because you just heard that the data they have is, is over ten years old, so that's a problem. But I, I, I can see why, think about how much it means to be a fifty percent, we're the numerator. So I think it's kind of a, a bitch with itself. Now, and I don't want to get all political, but is that by design? Or is that by accident? And we'll leave it at that. If we're not counting.
Well, Texas is poised to get some more seats in the US House of Representatives, and if we don't get a complete count, we're missing out on our presentation. So if you're ever complaining about why isn't our.
So, so she said what I was thinking, she said what I was thinking, and all I'm saying is, we need to be camp, that's all. We need to do our part to make sure that we figure out how to get word to the right people.
And all the answers are confidential, correct?
All, everything is confidential, it's not even shared, like, each and every agency with the government.
The US Constitution says they have to count everyone who lives in the US. That's it, who is living here.
Once in just once in the right place, and start a lot of them.
Well, what I do, she called us for a question for you.
Yes.
I've got three people at rest, and they applied, and they haven't gotten response from you all, so three of them did not find, so they can.
Um, they're calling between now and the middle of February, so after that time, they have not received a call. I'm only doing my card, and you've got to be now, so I can a little possibly.
There was, there was a fellow up in Alpine a couple weeks ago, and, uh, I have been saying thing, you know, just kind of.
Yeah, they just started calling, they started calling, um, this, this week, and they're gonna keep calling all the time like mid-February. Like, if we hire in mid-February, then they'll call come later on, but we need to start training them, so they can get out there.
Make sure to get a card out this way.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and, and my time, time was close, as to, I think, what you asked as far as the, um, application process. There is like a thirty to sixty day kind of turnaround.
They're trying to hurry it up with the background, background check and all that, but it's.
Because it's a process, yeah, because I'm, keep in mind that there's a clear, it's like, you have to get before you are eligible to do the job.
Right. So, so my question to that, you know, is, if it's a thirty to sixty day, thirty day background check, and you are going to be doing training starting on the thirteenth of February.
But they're gonna keep doing them, my council, until we get everybody trained. So we have to do them all the way to remember the address canvassing coming up. Enumeration doesn't really start till after May thirty-first. We just get first, the enumerators that we're gonna have, we're just gonna have to drop those cards at the, the houses that do not get mailed.
But if we have people that are interested in doing this, I hear the timeframe on it, but it's not, if they don't get this thing done till the first of February or middle of February, they're not out of the loop.
No, all the way to February, yeah, okay.
No, on, on the other hand, the, the sooner you get that you're eligible, you can work all the way to, like.
On July twenty-fourth.
Okay, so you can do different tasks.
Right.
You know, as, as the process kind of rolls out.
We really do not want enumerators from Chicago out here in June.
No, no. No, they don't want to be here.
I dare you to survive.
They don't, they don't, they don't want to be here, I, I like outsiders, but they, they can both, I mean, they get a.
California.
Can I have a water concession for generalize?
So this is no plastic cars.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
I've been, you're the fourth person that I've been around about this census. Two of which have been sort of representative participation meetings. And we tell the, the person, whoever it is, the same information, I've already heard of all of this, this is the fourth time. And there isn't any continuity. This is only for you.
No, we, we heard some of this before, we meet with, uh, Judge County.
But I mean, it starts like contacting the moon, that's a real big deal. It doesn't sound like a big deal.
Right, it's the biggest.
Tillinghammoon.com is how you do it. We have no radio, no television, no manna. And everybody gets the moon, that's a real thing. Uh, I, we didn't talk about it today, because I picked this term before, that we're gonna have a problem, I am gonna have a problem because I'm aware getting hold of the two pre-laws that spanned communities around here.
Correct.
A man that, that is willing to help and needs to be contacted by census, is Carlson Dos, he's supervisor for the Texas Department over here. And I already told this to the other three people, there's no continuity that's happening from census.
I understand.
You guys are talking to each other, that's frustrating. And I don't know that in a month, another person can be here. I'm for the census, I'm here to help.
Right.
And with the same conversation. So.
A lot of, a lot of it is recruiting, is there are different divisions, they're not classed. The, the three of us have been with the census since I started coming to Alpine. It's the gentleman that was there last week at, um, at the American Legion, have the list of Charlene from Alphabrid and myself. Uh, what I think you're talking about is just recruiting people. They, they're a whole different team, and they do a whole different thing, it's just to recruit people.
I haven't heard of Johnny, I haven't heard of what his name is.
But I understand what you're saying, I totally did, yeah. And we're the same way, we're like getting information from everywhere, and, you know.
Yeah, I went to one meeting in Alpine, and you, and this package and information. And then I sent, sent out, I want somebody to email this, which is good, and they sent me the notice to, um, that I sent on the mail, that it's done as an emergency. That I sent on the mail. It's done some murders in, because it's in the regular. And the notice is a big deal. It doesn't sound like it. It's real. Um, and it took me days on the bulletin board up there. That's a big deal. Otherwise, you're not gonna, you're spitting out there. Nobody's gonna know you sent anything.
Well, we'll definitely get it with the moon, sure. And I'll stop at the post office, but I thought we had lots of stuff at the post office.
On the bulletin board or in the office?
Driving it at the office is not affected. You have to.
On the bulletin board.
On the bulletin.
Do you have materials available in Spanish as well as English?
Remember the post office.
I know it being posters and small cards.
Yeah, and again, back to, back to your baby here, I mean, she's actually working in unison with the census, but she's actually working out of the cog, the crack, and she lives here. Not here.
Mark, the dry county areas.
Yeah, but her, but the whole point of her being here, she is that the conduit was coming in and was being distributed for sale. And that's kind of what your role, and I was at the meeting last week for the cog and I, they explained like the initiatives, you know, with the wifi, you were kind of challenging laptops and, and what her job is gonna be is to make sure to connect all the dots. And I know Judge, there's some, believe me, I got information from El Paso, from Odessa, from Denver. And I'm like, well, I already talked to so and so and I go, okay, well, let me, and so I feel you. But, but I can't let my frustration become, you know what, I'm done. I mean, we gotta figure out what to do. We can't just throw our hands up and say, I don't wanna hear it anymore. No, help me understand. And here she is, she's the source to do the moon. God, I know we've talked to, we had him on some of our lists. I'm not sure if he was ever contacted, but we'll do that. Eric and I will be the.
Well, last time we talked about, we spoke about him in the CCC, they mentioned his name.
Yeah, right. So I know he's, he's probably in some mood, but like Judge said, we don't know what he's in. So we gotta be sure to get him.
His wife, Juanita.
Yes.
Would be another one. She works at school.
And here.
Eric, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes. Oh, I wanted to say something. I think he mentioned something about funding for media blitz in Worcester County. And in South Worcester County, media blitz doesn't need radio ads. It doesn't need television ads. It needs posters on bulletin boards. And, and I was gonna say, I don't know if we have any lead where to spend that money, but if I had money to spend on media blitz in South County, I would pay someone to make the rounds to every bulletin board once a week and put the poster back up because the wind will take them away and they need to be redone on a weekly basis. And that's where if you're putting them up everywhere and someone is actually checking them, that they're still there and putting them back up when they've blown away, then you're gonna get a lot more people than if you put an ad in the radio. When the AM radio cuts that off before you, you got nothing down there except posters in the moon. And posters on the bulletin board get people who don't have internet access and the moon gets everybody else. And anybody who has internet knows you have to read the.
Mm-hmm. Sarah, something I know too that I think sometimes we forget in our picture, we're describing the area. Essentially, it's from about twenty miles south of Alpine. So it's, everything drove through here. It's not Turlingwood. We're talking about Southern.
We're not a centralized population, right? So when I do poster distribution for an event that I manage, I have a hit list. And it goes all the way from south of Alpine, Fluni Alpine sometimes, and then all the way down through here to Lake Hethis. And I know where all the bulletin boards.
Actually, we'll get your hit list. That's great.
Yeah. Because we have to, we have to disseminate it physically because there's no fancy way to get the information out.
Otherwise.
Don't forget the national map.
Right.
He's been too far over.
And that's where you're gonna get that mileage. Yeah.
We're gonna get out there in the park.
Last ten years ago, did you want to? Number?
Number years?
Thank you. Making door to door in the. I don't still miss the. Yeah, I'm. You're organized, yeah. You know where it is. More.
I'd like to support the.
Yeah. I'm the other. I'm the other. She has. I just have a. I'm the other. I don't know. Whatever.
I think I'll share.
I'll be, I'll be with you.
Okay, we're good. Thank you all for that. No, we have a lot more folks, but no, thank you for coming in. And I know it was, you kind of caught this vibe as far as last bit of it, I appreciate you coming down. And no, we're not giving up. We're, you know, the frustration is not out of who wanna make sure it gets done. And that's part of what we, as a community, wanna make sure that we have the resources that we do. Okay, let's move right into number seven, presentation by Ms. Sandra Vidos. Out of El Paso, correct? I didn't, yeah, I just turned it off for you. I turned off the, that is hot. In. She lives. Um, and we found, Ms. Vidos is out of El Paso, correct?
Yes.
And, and she, there was, Dennis Yancey reached out and Vidos had been talking about this for almost two months now, I believe.
Correct.
And, and a lot of what she's doing today is, is kind of helping or bringing some information to us as far as what it is that they have available that might help us out here at the outcome.
Okay.
You.
Cheers.
And then you just tap it in. Okay, so I'll, I'll bring her to the floor and if she, if you have any questions for her, you guys can ask after the presentation. Go ahead.
Thank you. So again, my name is Sandra Vidos and I'm a registered nurse with the El Paso VA. I manage the telehealth service. And I had a wonderful video, but I don't have any internet access, so I cannot play it. So I'm gonna skip that one. So I'm going back to about, talking about Atlas, advancing telehealth to local area stations. Um, the vision, the VA vision is so that veterans and caregivers, caregivers can choose VA in their communities. And VA care by telehealth will be offered in comfortable, therapeutic environments with modern equipment. Um, the telehealth strategic plan is we wanna leverage the resources that we have and strategic partnerships to bridge the digital divide. In other words, be able to offer some of these services in remote areas. We wanna collaborate with communities, the private and alternate agency partners to establish telehealth access points in the communities and or locations where there is a veteran population without internet service or possibly with internet service, but it's, it's the remote sites. The VA started several pilots in fiscal year nineteen. Some of those pilots are still going on right now in different parts of our country. So overcoming social and economic and geographic barriers to telehealth. So what we have available right now is a home program where the VA can issue a VA tablet. And the VA tablets come with internet access. Some of those features or the example is right up on top. These tablets are specifically so that providers can call those patients and do visits through VA, what we call VA Video Connect. So the community or the non-VA telehealth access points are here to deliver, to continue to deliver care to eligible or possibly enrolled veterans and expand access to specialty clinical services from across our enterprise, meaning, you know, we have access available in El Paso, we'll deliver it, but we can also have access possibly delivered from other facilities other than El Paso. Or Expring, for example. And we also wanna leverage space in clinical and social services for our veterans. So some of, some of the at the locations of interest. Um, what we have is access standards including urban settings. So I was talking to Mr. Yancey this morning about the services in urban settings. At some of our facilities, we have parking issues and a lot of traffic coming through. And so veterans or possibly they can't get to the facility. So we wanna try to offer those services even at the local universities and other government or non-government agencies that may be even closer to the VA. But we can still offer those services closer to where the veterans reside. Also, they have poor connectivity, larger veteran populations again, and they don't have any veteran services in their area. Also where they have limited community, community care options. And we wanna see enthusiasm for a community VA partnership with some of these programs. And so here I have a public library that opened up in Atlas Station. And then we also have several Walmart stores throughout the country that are partnering with the VA to deliver this type of care, to set up an Atlas Station and then bring veterans' care closer to where they live. So again, we're partnering with several veteran serviced organizations like the BFW and the American Legion. Retail spaces, as I mentioned, like at Walmart, which again have several pilot sites going on with them. Federal entities, as I mentioned, community sellers like this one, colleges and universities. So the clinical service and the workflow, we have, again, we call VA Video Connect. It's encrypted, secure, and a secure video visit. Um, we will do the scheduling for the veterans and for the providers that are gonna be seeing the veterans. We usually have telehealth equipment such as monitors without peripheral, without peripheral devices. And what I mean by without peripheral devices at this point is we don't have blood pressure machines. We don't have thermometers. We don't have stethoscopes. We don't have any of those items yet. Again, we just started this program in fiscal year nineteen and we still have the pilots ongoing. Phillips, the company, has partnered with the, with the VSOs, the BFW, and they have actually donated some of the equipment that some of those pilot sites are using right now. We take very seriously the security and the privacy of our connections. So as I mentioned, everything is encrypted and secure. And we also look at legal considerations such as memorandum of understanding and standard operating procedures with anyone that we are partnering with. So about the Atlas stations, these are not joint commission. I don't know if any of you know about joint commission, but it's an agency that goes into healthcare facilities and they do basically audits of how you run your business. And then they say whether you're following or not following guidelines and doing the right thing for your patients, your veterans, or our veterans in our case. But these are not joint commission stations. They don't require accreditation. Um, no shared use of peripheral devices is allowed, so meaning we don't have, that's why we don't have a blood pressure cuff because we can't allow from use from patient to patient or from veteran to veteran. Um, so again, no blood pressure cuffs, stethoscopes, pulse sensors will be provided at the site. A veteran can always bring in their device to their provider visit if they have any and use it at the time, but then they have to take it back with them. Um, care at this site should not be an adjunct to, as usual, VA care, meaning that not every type of visit, of this type of visit is suitable for every single type of patient. If you require a full in-depth exam by a provider, then obviously you have to go into the facility. But this can serve as a, as an additional way of reaching to your provider to receive the care so you don't have to drive back, say for a follow-up appointment or anything else that doesn't require a full exam. And the other thing is that there are, there are no VA employees at the site. So again, our, the VA has partnered with the American Legion and the BFWs. So just to show you some of the consent stations that were developed and their being in the pilots. The first one is to share of, share an existing office with somebody else. A new build, the video actually showed how they were building and the concept of building a station. And the last picture there is your custom modular pod. If we can just put in a pod in there or we can build it. So we have over ten go live sites throughout the country and the pilot face. And additional pilot sites are based on VSO interest, local VA leadership and hub support, population demand for the services, access standards for internet access medically and usually for medically understood facilities. Criteria defining the minimal requirements that the sites are on space, privacy, broadband is very important, and volunteers to help man these stations. So as I alluded earlier, we were talking about standard operating, standard operating procedures that have to be established between the site and the VA facility. And they will outline the full process flow in detail. So basically, prior to the veteran's arrival, the VSO or any of the volunteers will verify the room is clean and disinfected and equipment is functioning as expected. When the veteran arrives, he she will be escorted into the room at the time of the appointment. The volunteer will open the virtual medical room link and confirm the presence of the provider. The virtual medical room link could be also on the veteran's email. So they have, would have to log into your personal email account and then the link will be there. Um, the, the volunteer will exit the room, after which the provider will begin the visit once you get that connection established. And once the visit is completed, the veteran will exit the room and inform the volunteer the visit is complete. The volunteers then verify the session is disconnected or, you know, they hang up if needed. And the volunteer then disinfects the equipment prior to the next appointment. And that's really important because we wanna make sure it's a clean environment for our veterans. Um, and then again, making sure that the room is clean at the end of the day. So on our face one of our clinical services operated, the Atlas sites may include primary care, mental health, clinical pharmacy, nutrition, social work, rehab, and a few more specialties that may want to be able to provide those services. Selection of the clinical sites will be determined by the VA sites providing the care. Services most appropriate for telehealth including services from the hubs that demonstrate the need in the catchment area and familiarity of the local service lines with telehealth. So all of this means that we have to look and see what type of, what type of services we're providing to those, to those regions. Like for example, in Worcester County and Prestidio. Um, is there really a need for that type of service to be delivered? And also ensure that if we can provide those services to these remote areas. So about scheduling appointments, basically, the veteran, the volunteers will provide veterans who inquire about this with a handout. It contains information about the program, including the contact information for scheduling a visit and participating with a VA site. The volunteers will provide direct support for scheduling and will not, excuse me, they will not provide direct support for scheduling. So we give you the information, you call, and then we'll put you in contact with the service to ensure that they are providing telehealth service to your area and then we schedule the appointment. We will have designated scheduling points of contact also so that when you call, somebody will be there to answer your call instead. If you don't answer, you can always leave a message and they will get back with you. So about the memorandum of understanding, again, it's a national memorandum. We have standard operating procedures and each location will need to have an NYU standard operating procedures. And then also very important to this is emergency procedures that need to be signed by the supporting site and the VSO, which whoever is, is we're partnering with. Um, we also have a telehealth service agreement that again goes over all of this information to make sure that we follow what we're saying, we're gonna, the type of service that we're gonna provide to the veterans. And then the site in the location the area is interested. then we will contact the National Atlas Team at the VA and we'll coordinate with them and work closely with them to start up a site. So about the conditions or the area or the rooms that we're going to be using, they need to be comfortable. We need to have comfortable seating options. It's going to be a display, a monitor, computer monitor for the veteran and also they can bring in family members if they like. The ideal to have a couch, but a chair will do, or a couple of chairs will do. And space for a wheelchair in case they have to come in with a wheelchair. The room should be furnished with materials that do not absorb body fluids because as I mentioned before, we need to make sure we clean the rooms after the veteran visit and then disinfect it at the end of the day. Screen windows if present to provide patient privacy and prevent the glare. The glare when you're on a clinical video visit is really important because it darkens the video. Condensed lighting to prevent glare again. A floor-to-ceiling door with an inside lock for privacy and walls that can be cleaned and no carpeting on the floor. About broadband internet service, of course, that's going to be required because we are doing this to clinical video. We recommend 25 to 30 megabytes per second of download. Again, we have image, we have video going, we have voice and video, so that's really important. The heating and air conditioning needs to be available, proper fire suppression and safety alarms. It needs to be handicap accessible, have restrooms and hallways. So basically, we need to have a room that's compliant with the other kinds of disabilities. And cleaning the services, infection control and maintenance of the telehealth equipment is really important and capability to secure and lock any weapons that may be present on the site. And then also having a point of contact in case of an emergency, that's really important to us if, you know, we need to contact somebody outside of the room while the veteran is in there with the provider. So again, providing the point of contact in the area where the veteran is treated and directed to their appointment, so we need to have somebody who could be on-site to be able to escort the veterans on the day of their appointment. And also somebody hopefully that is, can offer technical support. Because sometimes, you know, we have, we may have technology issues, so it'd be really great if somebody had a bit of technical support to be able to navigate and help the veteran get in and establish the video visit. So the volunteers will assist with getting the veteran out to start the equipment and again, work with them if any need arises. So the other thing is that the volunteers are not present during the visit, so they do have to exit the room. And again, very important, so we have to call 911 or we have to call that PO, the point of contact, to contact 911 on behalf of the veteran. The other thing that would be great if we could have is a phone in the room. Sometimes when you're working with technology, the call may drop, the video call may drop. So having access to a telephone in the room would be ideal so that we could call that and get to the visit. Any questions?
Just a quick one, as far as non-veterans, so back from the facility and the program, is there a way for someone that is not a veteran, I would think the spouses do qualify for services of people who are veterans or family members, but what if it's somebody that's not a veteran? Would they be able to utilize some of the same facilities if necessary?
With, well, Philips was donating the equipment, the company, it was donated strictly for veteran care.
Okay.
So I'm not saying that Philips has donated equipment for children. If you're interested, we could work that out with the VA, but the equipment would need to be used by veterans because it is supplied by VA.
Oh, okay.
And then again, the video visits that we schedule with the veterans are through a veteran program that we have available, so we wouldn't be able to make a claim for anybody.
Okay, yeah, I know that veterans are finding, the need is there. You just kind of browse what could qualify would be.
I think it would be hard to find a site that meets those requirements. First, ADA compliant, fire suppression. Here we're ADA compliant and fire suppression, but we don't have internet. If we did, it would be 25 megabytes. There are other places that might have internet, they would have a wheelchair accessible. So I mean, finding a spot that needs to be authorized would be a good idea.
A specialty response. And look, you'll hear this, okay guys. Someone spent 35 years in government, federal service, military, and I'll tell you right now, we can't do that. Okay, I know that. And by the end of the day, she's going to know that, but we can adapt and overcome. Okay, Mike Drinker and this part of the crime center, I keep on thinking Travis, but I got a suspicion I've got the wrong name. I've already agreed to do this and we already know that there's going to be issues making this thing work the way it's laid out, okay? But we can make it work because you have to have a clean power source and that's all we're discussions going to have. We're going to have to see this broadband signal strength, okay? That's not too hard if you can do that. And there's something there all the time, okay? So all we need to do now is figure a way first to get people down there. Problem's going to be wheelchair accessible. If there's a laptop or a tablet, then that's easy. You take it outside and put it outside on the porch and let them do their thing. Privacy.
Restroom?
Well, it's a restroom, but wheelchair ain't going to happen. His restroom will pay. But again, we can make it work and for twenty, the family crisis center, I think, is the best option we have because you can't just have it there, you know, stuff's going to walk away if there's no one there watching. You know, people aren't going to know how to technically challenge, okay? So this is possible to do, but we're just going to have to adapt and overcome. And I think Mike Drinker's probably, of all the people I've come across county, he's probably the best one to make this happen. Okay, it is, he will find a way. If someone comes with a wheelchair, he'll get them down there. And I'm thinking down there at the library, because we can't close those doors, it's not tight, it's not soundproofed, but you can. He will find, he would find a way to get that person down those steps.
If you use headsets, if you have a laptop, if you have, you know, if you're using your iPad, you can have your headset. So there will be a little bit more privacy, so there's definitely.
Yeah, there's a degree.
Yes.
There's ways of getting any problem you have. It's just, you know, we got to think outside the box. Now, you can also notice, I'm on a roll. You notice you said an email sends your email account. If we can get Big Ben Regional, okay, to think about this, if they can find a doctor, you can do this from home, if they can send an email to your email account and you're sitting home, what does Atlas know if you're sitting home from around this computer? So why can't we get the same thing set up for the civilian population? All we have to do for the folks who don't have computers is provide the computers, okay? And provide a place to do it, okay? This is all working.
Right, and I think you hit on a couple of things, Dennis, that I think are really important to maybe elaborate a little bit on. You mentioned Big Ben Regional, and I know, you know, the facility, I know where it's at, but in order for us to help make that happen, to connect that thought, there would be an agreement between them and these folks and kind of the county being kind of just a, kind of like a negotiator. You're trying to help them out. In other words, we can't commit them to doing certain things, but I understand there are resources that we can reach out.
Yeah, and I mean, exactly what this program would help vets at least, but we can use the same ideas from the civilian market, maybe not even the same computers or something, but the same idea, okay? And the technology's there, we just got to find, maybe the reason we have to find the doctors to do this. Now, you couldn't, I know that at Fort Stockton, because one of the guys here stopped off and convinced them to show them what they're using for tele, because they're using tele for mental health, okay? That'll help. Basically, you click on an icon and you connect to your doctor, okay? Could be a VA person, well, we can't do that.
Right.
So if you're going to do it for the civilian population, then we have to have, someone has to set up a doctor at the other end. So we click on an email or an icon or desktop or whatever, there's someone there to talk to.
Yeah, and I think the point to all this is, I think it helps for us to hear and see how it can be done on somebody else's dime as far as this piece of it, but then model, use that as a model for the bigger, might be general population. Because obviously, if we can get it right, you know, kind of for the VA, the veterans, we expand on that and then we reach out to the local providers and figure out how to, you know, use the same model, but again.
Why does it have to be a local?
Or even, yeah, provided us not.
Our insurance. We have to, you can't have a telephone. Right, so I was going to say insurance companies now, you call and if there's an issue, they'll come and talk to the VA as long as you have a quick note.
And I think what we're, back to what Dennis said, exactly on the same page, is this rural area that is hard to reach because of the lack of accessibility to the internet and to the connection. The hospital district is here, I think they might, you know, because the energy care, that's another piece of it, that if we could do what he's doing to figure out how to, and it could be whoever, doesn't have to be the, I'm just thinking, general providers, maybe that was a better term that I should have used instead of local providers, it could be anybody. But then it's not, it doesn't affect the money or the program you're providing, we don't want to.
We don't want to compromise.
No, no, we don't want to compromise, we just want to use kind of a model to figure out, okay, how do we incorporate that stuff with South County?
Yeah. Just some numbers that I pulled from our system for fiscal year 19 as far as the veterans from Brewster County that actually had a visit to the El Paso VA. I'm not talking about big spring, but El Paso VA, we saw 222 users, what are being veterans from Brewster County last year and 57 from Prestidio, it's a lot smaller number from Prestidio. We have a lot more veterans that are enrolled, but they haven't seen, haven't been seen at the El Paso VA. And then as far as the type of services that these veterans received while they were at our facility, primary care was one of the biggest one, followed by clinical pharmacy services. So we have a very robust program right now with clinical pharmacists who are seeing patients in remote areas. We don't have Atlas Stations, so what we've been doing is you've seen iPads. We mail them the iPads so that they can do their visits with the providers. And the other one, the third program that we have with the largest number of veterans was mental health services. And that was for Brewster County. It was pretty much the same in Prestidio. Most of the visits were for primary care, then followed by clinical pharmacy and then mental health services, which again, you know, these services, we have them up and running at our facility at the moment and they're providing telehealth services to our veterans.
Commissioner, thank you for coming in this morning and I want to thank Dennis because one of the things that whenever we hired him as a VSO, one of the charges to him was to, hey, figure out how to get more core services, more access, more resources to our area. He's doing that, you know, and I know there, sometimes when you hear things like this, like, yeah, but that didn't apply to us. I like what he said, yeah, but we can make it work. Let's figure out how to think it, because we're responsible much out here, we got to figure out how to make these. Because we don't follow them, we don't follow under the model that El Paso or the river. But we're here, we're here to try to do our best, we're trying to get it out of the game, so thank you.
And we just added with this program, like I said, if this isn't a practice basis, we're going into a trial phase. But some of the other programs like the tablets that we can send to the veterans to their home, we actually do send birth control devices, so within these tablets, we can send a blood pressure cuff, electronic stethoscopes, high-definition cameras, pulse oximeters, thermometers, all those peripheral devices, we can send those to the veterans. So we're not limited just by, you know, an Atlas Station, we can provide some of the others.
There's other options, it's okay. The main is broader, it's just the main dish. Commissioner, is there any questions?
So that fiber, that fiber line, you know, that's for service to the public. That's why, I mean, it goes down with the highway or anybody else. So I mean, we went to the American Legion, for example, on Highway 118.
Okay.
One of the last ones, yeah, I brought them. And it is going to cost the crisis center, so maybe we can up the charge to get up to those speeds. So that's another financial problem that these are. Hopefully, I think Dennis is right, that is the most likely candidate.
There is fiber on the highway, they just need to get it from where it is across.
You mean, you mean at Whitegate?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it goes all the way to, I mean.
I wasn't aware there were actual customers on that line, I thought it just.
Yeah, no, we are.
Oh, good for you.
We are. It's just we're cobbled from our house to Whitegate. Okay, from Whitegate to, I mean, all they need to do is put in a note and go across the highway to the Legion. That's doable because the fiber is right down the highway.
Well, and again, thanks Dennis for bringing us real down and for the contact. And I know he did all the network, I mean, I just presented, you know, presented for this morning. Commissioner, I'd like to be safe, but we'll be in touch, we'll keep this ball rolling for sure, keep the momentum going. Okay, commissioners, it's about 12:10, what's your, what's your option?
Yeah, I think the next visitor is going to turn in.
Yes, yeah, yes, okay. Number eight, Big Ben Regional Hospital District, presentation by BRHD. And Commissioner Galatto actually helped put this together as far as reaching out to the hospital district. Do you want a real quick introduction or a real quick?
I think we have Jaclyn McCracken and Greg Huntington here. Greg Huntington is the, what is it, a single-member district representative for this area. And he's on the board of the Big Ben Regional Hospital District. And she, Jaclyn, is the executive director of the hospital district. So they are a taxing entity in Brewster County, so we all have taxpayers who pay further property taxes to the hospital district. And I think it would be helpful for especially South County residents who can't go to meetings and outpines Prestidio to get to know some of the people on that board and working for that entity and understand what the hospital does, can't do, and basically what y'all's mandate is and what y'all are working on, what's on the horizon for y'all and just help the community get to know you. Thank you both for coming.
So I'm going to go first, since I've been here longer than Greg. And he can settle in on your specific things. What I wanted to do, it's been a long year, a long time since I've seen you guys. Some of you I've seen, Zoe I've found are the best, except for Dave and Sarah. Sarah, thank you first of all for inviting us. It's been very, very busy, mostly in Prestidio, so I don't want you to think that we're ignoring you, we're not. Not as far as the bit, but it has been very busy. And first off, I wanted to tell you about the update with the directors. And Greg is one of our newest additions, he's not the newest, but he has replaced Lisa Taylor who is filling her unexpired term. And we are very hopeful that Greg will turn in his application to, for our collection. And I hope that you will persuade him to do so. We also have Alfredo Armandares in Prestidio District 1, and he just joined us. He was just, he's sworn in tomorrow, actually, he was just approved at our last meeting. just, he's sworn in tomorrow, actually, he was just approved at our last meeting, and we were likewise hopeful that he will join us as another incumbent candidate for our election that are currently filling out the candidate application by the period. So yes, we do have elections going on for districts three, one, three, and five, and five is Sunny Glen, and five is the strangest district, it's northwest Alpine, east Marca, it's a very scattered district, but along with the census, I suspect that we all have a great new districting of our districts as well, and that should be quite interesting, especially if the population changes that much. So, but that would happen until twenty-eleven, and then Judge Connoy did talk to Laura, and she said that we'll all be working together to get all of our maps done, so that we don't all have to pay individually. So, along with the, it's, it's interesting, now I've, I've seen four districts leave, and it's not that it's such a big turnover, it's more like a seismic shift, and so it just was like all of the old board members left, and now we have a brand-new board, and what I can tell you is that it's a lovely thing to see, because it's a brand-new energy, and they, they work very much together, and they're all very curious, and curiosity is a wonderful thing, because it brings new energy, and that's a great thing to see, because it brings good things for everybody's district, and they all want to know what they can do, what the past has been, and where do we go from here? And anytime somebody asks me, where do we go from here, it really makes me happy, because it's not all up to me to prod them, to say, when are you coming, are you coming, am I gonna make it on? I've never had to worry about that, and so I'm, I'm so excited about that, it really does make me very happy, and it encourages me to stay, so that's always a good thing. So, the next thing is staff. We have, some of you may already know that Liz Rohana has, has left, and I have very mixed feelings about that, because Liz has been such a stalwart, and, but then again, she's not that age that she needs to make a career change, and so I, I highly respect that, but it's a heavy heart, so. Before this, she did train up the next in line, and that person is Maria Urias, and she's in the Presidio office, and we've just approved for her to become the next senior patient advocate. She has just already been trained well, and Liz has done such a great job, I'm so proud of her. I'll miss her a great deal, but we're ready to go, she's already been doing it, and I'm very pleased to tell you that Alpine Office now has a patient advocate, and that person is here for the, to Tlinga clients, and her name is Monica Molinar, and she knows many of the people around here. Monica is born and raised in Alpine, so she's not new to, to Toronto, Jacob's, yes. So we just hired another Presidio patient advocate, her name is Monica Martinez, and she's formerly for BB and T, so we are very excited, we have a very strong staff, and the most exciting part is that we will be coming to Tlinga now, and that should be happening. I promised Sarah that we would have a, and Greg, that we would be bringing a very detailed presentation to Tlinga in, like, the February, and it's only been delayed because of the candidate file during the reelection, the offices must remain open for certain times, and so that ends on Valentine's Day, so appropriately.
Right.
And I cannot wait for that day to come, but, so we will be down here, I'm gonna speak to Sarah and arrange that, and this will be a lovely little word to have, and that will be, or whatever's appropriate, you'll tell me, whether it's, you know, the crisis center, where it hurts at. But we will, we're updating the information that we usually give, and so I'm gonna be very happy to do that, introduce my staff, and Dave will be helping with a lot of things, and I'm gonna tell you about some of the changes that we're gonna be making. First, I wanna tell you about some of the, everything that I'm gonna tell you is gonna, is gonna kind of go full circle, so you'll understand what's going on, because everything is very interrelated, where we've been, kind of focuses on where we're going. So, with the programs, programs and grants, the board made some, they deliberated for several months, and then came to the conclusion that we wanted to go in a different direction, and so what we did was we closed a couple of programs, and one was Martha meds, and Martha meds was initially, it's a pharmacy delivery program, and what we were doing was taking prescriptions from Alpine pharmacies and delivering them to Martha residents, because they didn't have a pharmacy, don't say anything, because I know what you're making already, and, and soon as I came to work, I was, came to work for the hospital district, I was like, well, so do other places, but it was a county thing, and that was the law, and basically what it was, was that the pharmacies were in Alpine, so you couldn't do it for Tlinga or Marathon, because you're in Brewster County, and it was, they were delivered to Martha, which is in Presidio County. Anyway, times change, everything else, there is a full-time pharmacy, but the pharmacist has staff interest in Martha now, and so it was time to change that, close that down, and dedicate those funds to something else. That decision was made, there was a little bit of, actually, there was no pushback from the residents of Martha meds, just the pharmaceuticals, so it was, it was a profit decision that we got pushed back, of course, it was definitely not. The other program that changed was the, that was cut, was the Medical Student and Resident Scholarship Housing Program, and the reason that was cut was that it was just, it morphed into more of a labor issue on my staff and myself, and expectations from the people that were coming in. This, when it began some ten-plus years ago, was very small, and it was designed to get more physicians to stay in this Brewster County and, you know, far west region, and while some did stay, I haven't seen many that, that are doing so currently, but that's not really why we cut it. We cut it because it was taking far too many hours out of my staff's time, and I have a very lean and efficient staff, I don't have extra people around that can administer this program, that is suddenly taking up only twenty to twenty-five hours of their time, and it is not part of our mission statement, which is for religion, health. So we cut the program, and we turned it into a grant for one year only, and the physicians themselves at PCHS are, they created their own five-oh-one C three program, and we gave them the same money for the one year to see if they could administer it, and try to find a response, so that's that. The next thing I wanna talk to you about is the hospital district and hospital relationship. When I first got here, it was, it was, it was okay, and then, interestingly enough, Rick was hired one month after I was, and so he and I had the same perspective, being from the outside, we didn't have any idea what was really going on, and we just came in and cleaned up the organization, organized it, and then now we're preparing for the future. We've done everything together, we were both outsiders to everyone else, but just because we weren't from here, and so we just, we put our heads down and we worked together to see, because we had the same patients, he has patients, I have clients, and, but they're the same people, we have the same focus, and we have the same mission, and so we work together very hard. He's for, he has a for-profit business, I have a nonprofit business, he serves everyone, I have a limited, a very limited clientele, but, one of the things that we are trying to do now, that we've both kind of arrived at the same place, is that while we're trying to, we've always, you know, been trying to change the direction, changing the direction is, is more again to changing the direction of a battleship than a speedboat, you know, it does take time, and everything that we've gone through has led us to this situation. So anytime you wanna do any strategic planning or anything, you have to do it at the same time as your budget, and you also have to do it with the thought of the directors, that are, are they in place now, and do they have more time? You can't convince your directors to something unless they have time to fulfill those, those things. So we have to wait, right now, we're waiting for a new budget, and we're waiting for a new slate of directors. Those directors won't be seated until June, which corresponds with when the next budget will be prepared. So let's talk about, let me tell you what is on the table to discuss, and that leads us to where we last left off at, for a clinic here in Tlinga, and as we all know in this room, that was not a pretty site. I don't think any of us wanted to go back to that, and we want to have a very collaborative effort this time, and what, what we're trying to do now is, is understand that Rick has, the hospital has, he has, he has a big provider service area, and I have two counties as well, and because I have two counties, that means that Greg Hennington has two counties to serve as well, and that means Presidio also, and all of those little places. And so what we've come across that might be a little bit easier is a mobile clinic, and that might, if, if we do a freestanding clinic here, then we need a freestanding clinic in Condalaria, or we need a freestanding clinic in Marathon, and, actually, Marathon hasn't asked for a thing, I mean, the whole time I've been here, it never asked for anything. And Liz, and it goes on and on and on, but if we have a mobile clinic, then we can ensure that the clinic survives, because the worst thing that happens is that you open a clinic and then it doesn't make it, and I think that was, our last time around, that was our biggest fear as well. But if we do a mobile clinic, which there are a lot of, we can adjust schedules to where it's needed, we have the ability to get around to get to places, Condalaria, Shafter, Marathon, here, you know, and we can be here multiple times, and you have the people that can be here and everything else, and so, but it's doable, and it's doable in real time, and so it's something that he has already looked into, he approached us with it, and we're very happy about it, and so that's, that seems to be the direction that we're going with, and in a very quick, at a very quick pace, so. I think the first thing that needs to be happening with that is, I know that, that needs and people change, and what people, and when I, I know that we do have to know what the needs are, but we also have to know what, what kind of, we've talked about so many resources, and so many needs and everything else, but we have to, you know, is it private insurance, is it the veterans, is it my clientele, is it, you know, Medicaid, Medicare, everything else, and so, it's, it's really, you know more about your population than I do, I mean, I know how many clients I have down here, but I'm not, I'm never sure how many more clients I should have down here, but I'm hoping that we will have more. That's always a double-edged sword as well, I never hope I have any more clients, but if there are ones to serve, I want to be there for them. So I hope to be working with you more in the future, and setting out times with you very quickly, to, to see where we can go with this, and how we can do more, because the more we know, the more we can adapt resources and everything else, and move forward at a very fast pace, and be ready for everything. For the Inogen Health Program specifically, she's gone, Tanya, she made a very good point about the Texas Legislature is very good about letting programs vesting authority in us to do some of the requirements locally, and what we are able, in our each, every hospital district, with this program, we are authorized to set up several requirements on our own, because of our unique situation. What we have found is that our, our population is getting, we have more people in a certain age group, let's say the fifty to sixty-five and older age group, we have more of those people, so that, that population is getting, the, the number of people is getting larger, and they're getting older. So we are going to, just like every other private healthcare insurance, they have a, a pre-screening this, you need to get your this, you need to get your this, you need to get your this, and this, and this, it's an adult exam every year, if you're a certain age, you need colonoscopy, a mammogram, this and that, we're gonna start doing that as well, and it will be, the requirements will remain in the program. We have had, last year, we had far too many cancers, and I've never seen a cancer diagnosis in our program until last year, and then all of a sudden we have four, and they are astronomical for our program. The first year I was here, our total expenditures for the program were two-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand, second year I was here, six-hundred-thousand, this year it will be at least eight-hundred-thousand, the budget is for eight-hundred-thousand, I'm praying it's not gonna be that much, but we're gonna have to do certain things, and they, and people will have to comply with these in order to remain there, so that we can screen people and get early detection as fast as possible. People have to be responsible for their own healthcare, you know, to remain in the program, you have to at least screen yourself. So these will be things that we have, we're going to implement, a lot of people are very happy about it, we are probably, I have United Healthcare, if anybody in our program needs, has a doctor that says that they need to see, you know, a referral, a this or a that, as soon as they get to my desk, it's authorized, as long as it's appropriate and everything else, so. I know that our referrals go out faster than my insurance does, and anybody in our program knows that as well, so we'll be doing a lot of education, a lot more of that, we've gone from having very few specialists to regaining them, and we were able to get, it's, it's been a very good turnaround, so it was very difficult when I first got here to, for people to get see certain specialists, they didn't want to take our program, and we did a lot of counseling, and a lot of talking, and reintroduction of the program, and everything else, and so we're into, we've gotten to the places to accept it, and Texas Tech, El Paso not so much, but, you know, of course, medicine and everything, and, and then from there, they'll refer on to other places as needed, so. It's going strong, it's, the patients are taken care of, unfortunately, they've been at Indy Anderson and other places, so they get the care that they need, and I'm just praying they're not gonna have to go there anymore. So the last thing that I have was, we are doing the elections, once again, of course, we're open for elections, but I'm hopeful that we have, we maintain the people that we do, and if you're happy with Greg, ask him to give in his application.
No pressure. Go pressure Greg.
No pressure, yes.
Can you at least generally touch on the requirements to qualify? Can you at least generally touch on the requirements to qualify for Inogen Care?
Okay, so let me just, I'm going to give you a 35,000-foot explanation. It's about resources and income. So you have whatever you make, or if you do, your paycheck, and then your resources. And your resources are whatever you have that you can sell to pay something off. Okay? Then we take that information.
Is that your house?
Yep.
For a learner to get out here and sell my house?
No, except your home state, can't do that, right? If you have two houses, yeah, that other counts, who bet it is? Count your cars, little stack of gold that you have, and don't say that, don't poo-poo that one, because one of your residents down here told us about his little stacks of silver that he keeps to sell off whenever he needs more money. And I was like, how the hell would I count that? But there's a method, so there's that, and all kinds of stuff. But we have a long list of things, you know, if you have goats, cows, this, that, you know, it depends. Are you keeping them as this, or are you using them as, are you a livestock, a rancher, or whatever? It all depends. Everything is, it's like, okay, I have this, well, it depends. Are you using it to work, is this your livelihood, da-da-da-da? You know, are you investing in this? There's all, the state and all the wisdom has told us that there's an answer for everything. So once we do the answers, then we take the numbers, and we put them in the software system, and it thankfully spits out another number, which is the final number, and it's like, it is a, it's like being pregnant, you either are or you aren't. We don't decide, the software does. Which I'm very thankful to tell you the truth.
I think you have to 100% of the property line, is that our limit here?
It's, yeah, it's, that's being taken under consideration.
Well, I know in Terrell County, they use the bare minimum, which I think is 20% of property.
Yeah, it goes, there's a whole lot of, you know, cost of living factors and everything else, and is there, are there jobs available, and all kinds of, are there other charitable resources available, and things like that? So that, you know, it's, that's kind of an apples and oranges, almost apples and potatoes, because in an urban center, there are so many more charitable resources and places that you can go to, whereas here, you really don't have that much to go to. So we do keep the number up higher, so that we, it's easier to qualify for ours than it would be in someplace else, because there's just nowhere else to turn, really. And so it's rather than a trickery.
Follow-up question.
Of course, yes.
It is not clear in my head why you provide other than, than anything, other than Inogen care.
That's our core mission.
What's your core mission? Do you need to do anything in addition to that?
We, okay, I'm glad you asked that. I'm sure that Mr. Hennington over there could answer that. We provided him a $65,000 for $65,000. Not him, I'm sorry, that was last year. Your Inogen care service.
Fire any individuals.
But as I understand it, that will not be added to this next year? Because it is, because it is not, you're readdressing the mission statement. Can you address that? That is up to the next board. It is every year, every year they decide, the board decides what they will do. So does the mission statement change? It's not part of our mission statement. So is providing and employing and training part of the mission statement? Grants are not, grants are not part of the mission statement. The mission statement is about, at the Inogen care. So what was provided down here is a grant. And that is not necessarily, that is decided by the board on a yearly basis. That's correct.
Jack, I'm John Waters, from the Big Man Gazette. Well, last time you were in the hospital district, I had about $2.9 million in cash. Is that still an accurate figure?
There's the money man right next to you, I'm sure.
You're the issue.
Sure he can, I'm going to.
I'm asking you.
I'm going to defer him.
You can't answer my question.
I'm going to defer to the man right there. I don't have the figures right in front of me.
All right. In an attempt to follow up on my first question, you mentioned Rick, and he came to you from the hospital regarding the mobile clinic. Could he give you a ballpark figure as to how much that is?
No.
You don't want to, thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to follow up on that. So maybe this is a question to the board, Jack. So in the consideration of the mobile clinic, there's no idea how much that's going to cost now? So the decision to not put a clinic down here is not being based upon a fiduciary question? Is that correct?
So look, for 28 years, I've paid taxes to the hospital district, who really didn't quite understand what that was about. So I want everybody to come to our public meeting when we have down here, because we will have one down here. Because I think there's some education that needs to be drawn, but in a nutshell, the state provided two statutes, the creation of a hospital district whose sole purpose is to provide Inogen care. That's the only reason they exist. Without a hospital district, that burden falls upon the county. So if we didn't exist in the county, these guys would be responsible for taking care of the needy people. It's actually called needy people in the statute. But the definition of needy people can move up and down. It can be as low as the national poverty level, it can go up depending on resources. But at the end of the day, our whole goal is to take care of the people who need health care and can't afford it, period. Everything else is sort of come out of the need to, you know, maybe spread some wealth around, because there is a pocket of money in the bank, but that money is there to support Inogen care, and as Jack mentioned, that's not a non-decreased sort of number. On top of that, we have a responsibility to provide clinical services to the, and so in the absence of a hospital, we would be required to provide the same thing the hospital provides, which should be a pretty large number if you were going into the hospital business. We own, actually, we own the land that the hospital sits on. We own the buildings and the property, and then they, we have another contract with them to provide services, so we want to see that continue. At the end of the day, I think the new board is looking hard at some of the things that we've done over the years that have gone away from the mission. And I want to holler, speak freely, that I am one of the people that believe that we got off mission. That's my opinion, I'm one member of the board, and I believe that we can get back on mission. So all previous grant, and look, all of the things that we've done in the past, grants to the NS, grants to homeless shelters, crisis centers, medical student housing, there's nothing wrong with any of those programs, they're all worthy programs, but I'm not sure that the hospital district, again, in my opinion, is statutorily obligated to provide those services. That's the simplest I can make of it. So I think, where I'm learning, the new board is learning, I do think that providing a clinic intralingu, can, is part of providing assistance to Inogen care, can happen and should happen. And there are lots of things on the table, the poor local health clinic is one of them. I personally like the tail health clinic myself. But at the end of the day, I think we're, and I think we're all sort of committed to making sure that wherever you live in Presidio, Rush County, that you have access to clinical care. But that's on the end of it. And if a clinic is to be set up, it's going to have to be done, in my opinion, by the citizens of South Rush County, just like we formed the EFC in '04. And other things in South County, I think it's going to be up to the citizens, like Zoe and you guys, to come up with the ideas of what you want. I think we have some funding for that, and that clinic can certainly see patients other than Inogen care, they can see me, who has a crossroad shield. But our, our, it would have to support, so frankly, it can't, and I'm in the camp that I've seen clinics come and go over the years, because a lot of the funding has run out. And I'm not interested in seeing a clinic come in this time, and it'll be closed in two years, it doesn't certainly place a point. So if we're going to do it, we must take some time to do it right, and everybody is most interested to see one down here, me included, but I think we can look at lots of options and lots of numbers.
I have a concern on the, on the need part of the Inogen. When you get Alpine to the hospital, and they provide all the services that you need, the need for them, for treating patients in there, is, to me, bring the wagon up there, okay, awesome? Because, you know, $60,000 for a helicopter?
I would.
Yeah. I mean, I'd like for you guys to, as a board member, think of it.
Yeah, I don't think the scope, when they originally designed it, I don't think the scope really evolved much about the NS side of the equation.
Yeah.
And I have some questions about that myself, but I, I think that, I think at the end of the day, we, at least I can ask myself, if we're going to spend the time, how does that help, how does that help the needy? Because it shouldn't exist a fund needed for Alpine. I'm not needy, but I am needy.
We all, we all need.
And I don't know the answer to this, but it's something we haven't talked about, can a person apply for a card through our program that is needy, and when they take an ambulance ride, get that paid for? There's no precedent for that that I'm aware of.
There is.
This or something.
It's not happening in our program.
But maybe it could be, and I don't want to speak for that, because me and the board do.
No, I mean, just.
But you have to, you know, there are a lot of people, you guys are the most, I think, 50% of the buildings, throwing a fire in the mess, we run off. You know, all right? So we get paid by Medicare, we get paid by private church care, and everything else is private pay, so we would pay out of our pocket, or they don't pay. And so there is a certain chunk of the population, we all know, that cannot afford that ambulance ride. There may be a way for them to, but they would have to enter the program like everybody else, for me to say, well.
Well, I understand $65,000 would not hurt to come by.
Yeah.
You know, until you don't have it. But if you're thinking that somebody makes you aware, you know, maybe that's five dollars a month.
Right.
If you'll set that aside, you can have insurance.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they're okay. So, but anyway. I encourage everybody to be part of it, and join me in learning about what hospital districts do, because they're pretty interesting and structured.
And just a real quick, to kind of spin off from that, I know Greg Hudson put together a really good powerpoint.
We have.
Which is one, because.
We're going to deliver that.
And I would, so I would encourage folks that are interested in learning more about the hospital district, the initial intent, kind of how it was structured, how, but I think that, again, it's almost like, when I came into the county, you know, five years ago, I inherited a lot of stuff from 20 years ago, and it takes time, you know, to get, get kind of a handle on, on what was implemented 20 years ago, because things change. And I'm not blaming anybody, I'm not going to say through a bad mouth from my person or anybody, but I'm saying that, that as you learn the job, you come into an organization, to a board, to a commissioner's court, it takes time to get your legs under you, you know, and then you start figuring out, okay, this is what I'm really dealing with. It might need two to three to four years before it becomes yours, and even with you, you know, kind of in your present company, I think it's, but I think that the commitment from the board members, having some stable, you know, staff that are actually going to be here for the long run, it helps to change that culture. And I think the next step is, okay, now how do we go back and identify what the needs are presently, and with the growth? And some of the things we're seeing, cancer on the rise, you know, prevention, how do we piggyback off the VA presentation? How do we come in and do things with our, with the hospital? You know, and even PCHS, whatever is here, provider-wise, El Paso, interns, you get all these people to kind of come to you.
It's cloud, remember?
It is. But I think, someone mentioned earlier, we need to take some responsibility for ourselves.
Yes.
Because we, at the county, we're doing a wellness program. We're going to have a facility that our employees can go and work out and get, stay healthy, because our interest rates depend on how often we use insurance. So this is a kind of a bigger issue. Yes, sir?
And I second what you're saying to, something you mentioned, Jack. It almost feels like these are, this is a cross-purpose a little bit. If the mission statement for the hospital district, the other is Inogen care, what can qualify for, qualifying for Inogen care is that they have a colonoscopy, they have a mammogram, et cetera, that population doesn't have insurance.
No, 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 it's to remain in the program.
But, so they can get into the program.
No, no, no.
They have cancer, but they haven't had a colonoscopy.
No, 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 no. No, no, no. It's a, it's a, it's a form of screening. It's once you're in the program, and you go to your doctor, your doctor will say, you know, we give you a list, and all of them, they all know what it is.
So after they qualify for the program, then.
No, 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 no.
Stay in the program.
To stay, to remain.
Oh, it's to remain. Remain is the key.
That's good, I mean, that's, that's figured.
Yes, sir?
I've got a couple of comments. Just a few minutes ago, we heard about relative to the head. We've got to find a way to skin the cat, and maybe get, and I've heard in discussions in the hospital district, our mission statement, our mission statement, our mission statement. I'm only preferably interested in that mission statement, and acutely interested in what does the statute allow beyond, if anything, beyond the current mission statement? Because there, there are a variety of needs that have been mentioned. Ambulance care.
Why not?
A clinic here, a clinic there, a bus, whatever, that, as of this moment, don't fit within the mission statement. But I want to know what does the statute allow the organization to do to deploy?
And for that, I would say, back to the workshop that the hospital district is going to be hosting in February, correct, Greg?
February.
Yeah, whatever, because I think there'll be a lot of good, practical information that's going to be shared, that is going to hopefully, because I've seen the powerpoint, and to me, it wasn't until I saw that that I really understood what it all, really what it's rather, which helped me to understand really more about the funding and why it was reserved. If the hospital shuts its doors today, in Alpine, they got suspended, which is why those reserves are important to have, and, so, the board will next do it.
If I may, you may have missed it, I said that was a relationship, that was not the hospital district is buying the class of Inogen or not. It's a relationship to help the, to work with the hospital. Because here's the thing, if the hospital fails, this whole region is a big problem. And that's what everybody has to remember. Dutchland knows this, if that hospital failed right here, we are all going under. All right? That's a big, big problem, because nobody else is coming here. And then that's, if that hospital fails, you can bet that the hospital district is going back to the county. It is ours.
It's all your revenue, you know, and I think that it's because of our tax base, and because of how, how we're funded, how you're funded, we need to make sure to take care of our constituents, that's it. Because at the end of the day, when push comes to shove, some, those doors can shut. You know, so that's where we need to really be very mindful, and have representation on these boards, in commissioner's courts, with the local folks that understand, because they're affected by, I got a baby, I have a one-year-old, I have a five-year-old. Most of us have kiddos in the public schools, so we know taxes, and we know healthcare. So the more that we represent with certain things that we can make a difference, the better off. Yes, sir?
Whatever. Follow-up. You have, and at least two places, Mark, I'm sorry, Alpine and Presidio, what do you call a patient advocate or something?
True.
But I assume have a significant portion of their job is getting people involved in your program?
Let me explain, so you don't have to assume, that is their job. Their job is to, is to take in clients, to help them with the paperwork. Paper process is not easy.
And are those same services provided to South County?
Yeah.
Oh.
Well, the people in South County either go to Presidio or Alpine, they're kind of split up, but what I, you made this when I said that I was very pleased to say that our, now that we have an Alpine person, she'll be coming here. So she'll have regular funds that those different people can use? I'm going to say, I, we're going to try to. I'm gonna say that, we're gonna try to work out that schedule, yes.
You have to re-roll every six months, correct?
I'm sorry?
You have to renew your enrollment every six months, is that correct?
Yeah, but that's, that's the thing, is that everybody's enrollment is different, but yes, we roll.
Well, I, I understand that having someone helping through that very complicated process is critical.
It is the same process, though, you don't go, it's the exact same process, so it's, it's the same documents, it's the same process, and it's, um, so it's, you just have to learn it once or twice, and then it's, um, and just so you know, this was meant to be a, a temporary program. This was not meant to be insurance for life. It's a temporary program, it, it has turned into insurance for life for people.
Speaking of people, we're, we're indigent for life.
Well, that's what Medicaid is for, not this program.
Uh, and, and, and in the interest of time, in the interest of time, I, I do encourage folks though to, as soon as that, so where would they find the posting for the next meeting for, uh, the workshop that's coming, is it February? At, there are.
I do, sir.
Okay, yeah, do, sir, and then we'll, we'll get, make sure to get the word out of when and where it's gonna be.
Ma'am, we need you to name for the.
Yeah, introduce yourself for the, for the minutes.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. And it is Jackie McCracken. She'll turn in your card. Okay, let's move right into, uh, we're down to, uh, there's something larger that is gonna require some action. It is, uh, it is my law firm, so that's better than I. Number nine, approved contract law, Sarah Leone Associates LLC, discussion and appropriate action. Uh, commissioners, as some of you may recall, I remember last, uh, guaranteeing, um, Greg, Greg Hudson, glad to know this, that, uh, he's no longer.
Yeah, I wanted to hear how long he's been.
Okay, okay, let me come back to the, the, Greg Hudson is no longer, he, he retired, uh, he died of, uh, seven thirty. And with his retirement, uh, commissioners, as y'all will recall, a lot of the things that would come into the county would get bumped over to Mr. Hudson for reputation of the county. So he, he'd be the county's, uh, county's attorney outside of, of, uh, our own attorney, Steve Houston, who is actually the county attorney, but his primary function, and really his only function that he has to do is to be a prosecutor. And, and he, he holds pretty firm to that, you know, kind of thought and concept that, you know, if it's something that's contract related, money related, inter, intergovernmental related, he'll go ahead and bump it out, you know, since he don't wanna, that's not my area of expertise, call Greg. Well, Greg's no longer an option. So whenever Greg, Greg and I, we were talking back in November, December, he gave me a two or three different options. Ms. Sarah Leone, uh, the firm that she's tied to, or it's, I guess it's her firm and her associates, uh, was the first thing that, that, that he mentioned, and I do have a couple of others in the office, but to give you a, a real quick update on what's happened here in the last couple of weeks, um, there's some, uh, there's a bond spending in Rush County, and if I said the name, y'all will know the history of it. In the past, when that letter hit Rush County, it would automatically go to Greg, Greg Hudson. Again, there is no Greg Hudson. So it kind of puts us on the, on a shorter timeline to do something with, with this letter, because it, to try to prevent it from getting to the midst of, of it becoming a lawsuit. Uh, not uncommon for counties, you kind of what we're dealing with, but if we don't respond to, if we don't have a lawyer respond.
Is that your recommendation, is who he recommends?
This is lady that he recommended, yes, sir. Ms. Sarah Leone and Associates is a recommendation for the law firm to replace him and, and his role in Rush County. Uh, commissioners, you have, it's a short document.
How's that, uh, how's you go, the rates? The rate compared to what, what we, what we had before?
They're, they're presumably higher, but I'll tell you that Greg's rates were based on nineteen seventy-eight rates, it seemed like, because.
Is that right?
Yeah.
I was gonna ask you.
Because he was, he was here, and commissioner, before you guys came involved, he was already the attorney for the county, correct?
We got in there just after we, after I got.
After you, which was, what, you were.
Two thousand five.
Yeah, oh five.
I know you've been since. The nineties.
And, but I will say, these are comparable to current rates. I will say that these rates are compar, and she knows the area, she, she and Greg worked business partners officially, but they worked together on different, on different municipality and county related issues. And he spoke very highly of this, he said, you know, she'll be the right, and she will be, basically, in his place, it was his recommendation. Um, because of that, uh, and because of what's happening with our, our timeline, with this letter that we received, kind of feel like, you know, we'll get this thing out of the game sooner or later, because if we sit on, on that letter, it's gonna turn into a lawsuit, is the bottom line. Now, I'll explain, one other thing, as far as that letter, TAC, we do have insurance for these kind of things. In the past, people will recall, with, uh, whenever Ronnie went to Abyss Court of Appeals and New Orleans, we got reimbursed by TAC for representation that Greg did for us, um, because that's part of our insurance. So this is something that's tied to it as well, but we do need an attorney to do it for us, like Steve's, I'm gonna do. So that's, so, so my, my recommendation is.
Would move after, to his feet that you talked about, for example, uh, his first office when they went to New Orleans.
Yes, sir.
We still have to pay the deductible, correct?
Yes, sir, there's a deductible.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure, Julie's not here, but, um, and I'm not sure what that, that number, that's.
Six or eight, somewhere. Anyway, anyway, my next question is, is there, are there any local attorneys that have that point? Did we ever have to pass for it or anything like that, or?
No, sir, see, Patty Roach had mentioned played out an RQ, a request for, a request for qualifications, um, and that was, that was a track that we're on, is, is asking, uh, asking attorneys to submit their, you know, their qualifications or the proposal. But back to what's happened with this letter that we received last week, I mean, you know, time is of the essence, if we would do something quickly, that is gonna turn into a lawsuit. And again, using this for, one of the reasons why, I haven't met this lady, I don't know her at all, I just know her because of Greg, to be honest with you. So I'm not.
We're not tied, according to this contract, we're not tied to her.
No, no.
And use somebody else's.
Yes, yes. If we choose to.
Yeah.
Yes, and, and, and if we wanna get to the point where we wanna put it out, put out an RQ and have this submit, then we can, it'd be a more full, larger, longer term agreement. This was the one, we need somebody to come on board, the hospital, so we, so I can, yeah, and so I can hand her off to all of that letter, and she can respond to his attorney. But I mean, that, and you know, it, it takes a, a certain kind of law firm that can do what Greg Hudson did with the local government, with county governments. Back to what he said about this, this lady, she knows Rush County.
Well, uh, then that should be, that she had experienced with, that works at, kind of.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, yeah, yeah, yes, sir, yeah, but she, a lot of her work is dealing with counties, I apologize, yeah, that's, that's, that's one of the focal points of her firm, is she works with municipalities and county governments. And again, she, she is in New York right now, she said, well, I can send somebody, I said, look, I'd rather do this piece and then have you come in, her, you know, to a, a commissioner's court sometime in February, introduce herself, and she, yeah, I was gonna keep breaking on what's, what her experiences, what she's done, um, you know, just to do, do our due diligence in hiring her and committing to her long term, but at this point, we just need some representation. Now, Julie, uh, I gave her all the information so she could reach out to TAC, uh, and, you know, for the insurance piece of it, so that whenever this hits, the letter is not gonna be a big number, she's gonna send a letter to, to the lawyer, but if, if they file a lawsuit, then it might turn into, you know, where we got the insurance. Any other questions, commissioners?
Greg spoke very highly of her.
Right.
Said that she was, she was, the first thing that came to mind when I turned my vocal government law, said she knows it almost as well as anyone.
Yeah, because you and I were both in that meeting, you were in that meeting when he, when you and I talked to him. Yeah, so, so I forgot about that.
He also recommended her to the hospital district.
So I have a question here on the, on the contract. So, the last important.
Yes, sir.
So it says, and not, I may not be understanding this right, said that it, it has not and will not boycott Israel?
Oh, yeah, that's what Texas requires.
Really?
Texas requires that anybody who works for Texas state that they have not and will not boycott Israel.
Okay.
Yeah, and you?
I think engineer, that's a good question. Anybody who gets paid from tax pay money, it's pretty widespread at this point, regardless of state, have a clause like that.
Well, with Greg's recommendation, I'd go ahead and move that we, uh, contract enter into the agreement with her to, to use your, uh, Sarah Leone and Associates, as I'll see.
Okay.
The second motion.
Oh, motion for mine, correct?
Uh, it says on the, on the other, you can, you can get anybody in there, she's not, she's not the only person.
Go ahead. That's what I'm making sure of that.
Okay, sir. Uh, no, uh, motion to, uh, enter into agreement with Ms. Sarah Leone, we are outside council representation of Rush County, second by Commissioner Bala, with a noted up question by Commissioner Vines as far as being able to use other firms as needed, as, as appropriate, uh, aim for a discussion, all's in favor? I oppose, says. And we will work with her to give you the information this afternoon about this, about the, the bond. Okay, uh, number ten, Rush County Auditor, I don't think we've had anything to say there, I don't know. Yeah, she asked that we give it on just in case anyone builds it, kind of came up, but nothing's, nothing came in. Number eleven, scheduled next Friday, Commissioner's Court meeting, uh, and it will be, it is scheduled for February the twelfth, twenty twenty, at nine thirty AM, that's back in Alpine. And number twelve.
Move it in here.
Second. Motion to adjourn at Commissioner's place, and Commissioner Vines, aim for a discussion, all's in favor?
Aye.
All's in favor, thank you, please. Mr. Brach.